Good evening, council members. I will now call to order the City-County Council meeting for Monday, July 12, 2021, and we will begin our meeting with a prayer and pledge of allegiance led by Counselor Ali Brown.
For our prayer tonight, I'd like to welcome up Bishop Jennifer Baskerville from, she's the bishop of the Episcopal Diocese of Indianapolis.
Good evening. As bishop, I represent some forty-seven faith communities across central and southern Indiana, the majority of which are located in Marion County and adjacent communities, and I'm a proud resident of District Seven. Please join me as we begin our time with prayer. Gracious God, lover of souls, may invoke your robust presence as the City-County Council goes about the business of governance and service to your beloved people of the city of Indianapolis and Marion County. Give to our council members courage, wisdom, and foresight to provide for the needs of the people they've been elected to serve. In ways large and small, may they commit to care in actions that will break down systems of injustice and lift up those who bear the undue burden of oppressive systems, and in so doing, create better communities for all of us. Do not limit their vision, oh God, but give them the ability to see the dignity of every human being. Do not make their courage frail, oh God, but make them bold in moving toward just laws and policies. And as you have given us the taste of freedom that is the gift of being born as your beloved, give us all, elected public servants and active citizens alike, the hunger to work and fight until all are truly free. We have been called together into a work we cannot know the fullness of. Still, we put our trust in you, gracious God, to knit our imperfect hearts, our weaknesses, our strengths, our stories, and our gifts to one another and always to you. We pray this in gratitude for your grace and guidance, oh God of many names, who is love. Amen.
Thank you. Now the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have twenty-five in attendance. We have no guests this evening who are already not part of the agenda, so we will proceed to official communications. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen, you are hereby notified, the regular meetings of the City-County Council, Police, Fire, and Solid Waste Collection Special Service District Councils will be held in the City-County Building in the council chambers on Monday, July 12, 2021, at seven o'clock PM. The purposes of such meetings being to conduct any and all business that may come properly before regular meetings of the councils. Sincerely, Bob Osley, President, City-County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to the laws of the state of Indiana, our calls to be published in the Court and Commercial Record and in the Indianapolis Star on Friday, June 25, 2021, a copy of a notice of public hearing on proposal numbers 179 and 182 through 184, 2021, set hearing to be held on Monday, July 12, 2021, at seven o'clock PM in the Public Assembly Room of the City-County Building. Respectfully, Serita Hughes, Clerk of the City-County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, I have copied, I'm sorry, ladies and gentlemen, I have approved with my signature and delivered this day to the clerk of the City-County Council, Serita Hughes, the following ordinances: fiscal ordinance numbers 10 through 13, general ordinance numbers 17 through 19, general resolution numbers four, special ordinance numbers four and five, and special resolution numbers 25 and 26. Joseph H. Hockset, Mayor. Mr. President, this concludes the official communications.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Do I consent? The next item on our agenda is approval of journals for June the 7th, 2021. Do I consent?
Consent.
We'll now proceed to the presentation of petitions, memorials, special resolutions, and council resolutions. And this first item on our agenda is proposal number 227, which recognizes the academic achievement of the best and brightest scholars in the Marion County High Schools, the valedictorians. I believe that is Counselor Hart.
I just want to first acknowledge that this proposal does have a full bipartisan support on it. Well, I had a lot of colleagues of mine recognize the importance of education and what it can do for the city of Indianapolis. And so with that, I'll go ahead and read the proposal, their special resolution this evening. So this special resolution recognizes the academic achievement of the best and brightest scholars in Marion County High School, the valedictorians, whereas Marion County is home to twenty-two private and forty-three public high schools, and whereas these schools account for fifty thousand students in Marion County alone. In Marion County, whereas Marion County has the highest student-to-teacher ratio for any county in the state, nearly twenty-four students per teacher, and whereas the day is for this county to recognize the achievement of the diverse group of sixty-five students to honor their hard work, determination, and perseverance. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City-County Council of the city of Indianapolis and of Marion County, Indiana, that section one, the Indianapolis City-County Council proudly recognizes our city's highest scholastic achievers. Section two, the mayor is invited to join in this resolution by affixing his signature hitherto, and section three, that this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance with IC 36-3-4-14. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion has been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? All right, motion carries. Back to the speaker.
Mr. President, if you don't mind, I had a few words I wanted to say about this. I know generally we invite somebody, but with being so many, thank you, sir. With there being so many great valedictorians, I wanted to, you know, respect social distancing with, since we already have a packed house today, so I did write a few words. That being said, you know, education is one of the most essential essences of modern society. And it's not just through subjects and books, but it's also through experiences and people. And we're never too old to stop learning. Education molds people into leaders. You know, it teaches us how to lead with values, the differences between right and wrong. And today, you know, I stand here as a counselor, but I also stand here as a parent. And I also want to thank all the parents and guardians who have supported their children and these valedictorians, and supported them to help them grow. You know, the presence of a solid family is more and more urgent every single day, just as much as education is. And parenting is no easy task. So thank you to all the parents as well for supporting the child to achieve these such goals. And finally, I know that everybody on this council is hugely proud of these sixty-five students who have earned this achievement in Marion County. And we are confident that they will make Indianapolis proud wherever they go, whether it's a college, in-state, out-of-state, a school, whatever they want to do, they will make Indianapolis proud. And finally, we can only hope that they will return to Indianapolis to continue to make Indianapolis a greater and brighter place. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselors. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 228, which supports federal background checks for all gun sale laws.
If I may, request your permission, I would like to brief statement on the background of the proposal, read the proposal, have three brief speakers, and then hold the vote, if we may.
Please proceed.
Thank you. This proposal is an encouragement of our federal officials to pass universal background check laws for the sales and distribution of firearms. House Resolution 8 is also known as the Bipartisan Background Checks Act of 2021. It would expand...
Just a moment, Counselor.
Sure.
Can everyone please silence their phones? Please proceed, Counselor.
It would expand background checks and tighten gun sale regulations nationwide. Specifically, it would broaden background checks for all firearm sales or transfers across the country. Current laws require background checks only for licensed firearm dealers. By closing particularly the gun show loophole, HR 8 would expand background checks in those, in these cases, making it illegal for anyone who is not a manufacturer, dealer, or licensed firearm importer to trade or sell guns. With that, special resolution in support of federal background checks for all gun sales law. Whereas, federal law only requires a background check when a gun seller is a licensed gun dealer, leaving all sales, such as unlicensed gun sales negotiated over the internet, unregulated, unchecked, and...
Whereas, a 2015 survey found that nearly a quarter of Americans, twenty-two percent, who acquired a firearm within the past two years did so without a background check, and whereas our federal background check law was written twenty-five years ago, well before the establishment of online gun marketplaces, and...
Whereas, a recent investigation found that on a single website, there are nearly 1.2 million ads for firearm sales that did not require a background checked, check, and whereas, a recent investigation found that one in nine persons looking online to buy a gun from an unlicensed seller would fail a background check investigation, and...
Whereas, a recent investigation of online unlicensed gun sellers found that state background check laws have a profound public safety impact, with only six percent of sellers contacted by investigators indicating they would require a background check, while eighty-four percent of sellers from states with background check laws expressly stated they would follow the background check laws, and...
And whereas, the national instant criminal background check system is an effective tool to keep guns away from prohibited purchasers, including felons, domestic abusers, and people involuntarily committed, and over 3.5 million sales have been blocked to violent criminals and other prohibited people since the system began in 1994.
And whereas, despite this success, the system is undermined by loopholes that enable guns to be sold without a background check, and...
Whereas, repeated polls show overwhelming support for requiring background checks on all gun sales, with ninety-four percent of American voters indicating support, including ninety-two percent of Republicans and ninety percent of gun owners, and...
Whereas, the U.S. House of Representatives has passed HR 8, an important bipartisan public safety bill that would require a background check for every gun sale by a vote of two-hundred-and-forty to one-hundred-and-ninety, and...
Whereas, in 2019, House Bill 1291 was introduced in the Indiana General Assembly by Representative Carrie Hamilton, that provided background checks for the sales of firearms in Indiana. However, that proposal was never heard in committee by the General Assembly. Now therefore...
Be it resolved by the City-County Council of the city of Indianapolis and of Marion County, Indiana, section one, that the City-County Council hereby urges the United States Senate to pass and President Biden to sign critical public safety legislation to require a background check on all gun sales. Yes, I so move.
Second.
And if I may, I...
Questions are properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
That motion carries. Comments from Counselors?
If I may, Mr. President, I just have three brief speakers, Representative Carrie Hamilton, Mom Demand Action Representative Rebecca McBracken, and some parents that would like to say a few words, Steve and Cheryl Shockley.
Very good. Please proceed, Counselor.
Thank you, Council President Osley, and thank you, Counselor Boots, and all of the co-authors of this resolution. I truly appreciate your advancing this concept. I think it's very important. As was noted in the resolution, in 2019, I authored a bill at the state level that would have closed loopholes for background checks in Indiana. And the reason I did this was I was studying kind of the most common sense things we could do to reduce gun violence in our community, and had a conversation with recently passed former prosecutor Curry, and learned some really important facts about this particular issue, this loophole in the background check. So we have this law that's been in place for over twenty-five years at the federal level, but there are these loopholes that have, over time, grown to allow more and more sales of handguns and other types of guns to folks who should not have them, people who are violent offenders in our system. And of the twenty-two states that have passed such legislation, they have seen fifty-three percent fewer law enforcement officers shot and killed in the line of duty, forty-seven fewer women shot by intimate partners, and forty-eight percent reduction in gun trafficking. These are important statistics, staggering statistics, when we think about the tools in our toolbox to keep our communities safer, to keep guns out of the hands of people who our society has said should not have them, who our laws say should not have them, but yet we have this loophole in place. So while I proposed this legislation at the state level, it was not heard. Similar proposals by House and Senate Democrats in recent years have not been heard. I do not believe there will be state action in Indiana in the near term, and therefore I am thrilled to rise in support of this resolution that supports federal action to help keep our communities safer. And with that, Counselor Boots, I want to thank you again for this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. Rebecca McBracken, please.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight in support of special resolution 228, supporting a federal law requiring background checks for all gun sales. My name is Becca McBracken. I'm a volunteer with Moms Demand Action, and my primary role is in the Be Smart for Kids program, where we talk to parents and all adults about keeping kids safe from guns. Moms Demand Action is a nonpartisan grassroots movement of Americans demanding common sense solutions to the gun violence in our country. Moms was actually founded by a Zionsville mom, Shannon Watts, the day after the Sandy Hook shooting. Now we are part of the largest gun violence prevention organization in the country, Every Town for Gun Safety, with more than three million supporters and a chapter in every state. Our Indianapolis group has nearly four hundred members, and we also have groups in Boone County, Hamilton County, Hendricks County, Muncie, Bloomington, Columbus, Evansville, Fort Wayne, Lafayette, and South Bend. We're all across the state of Indiana. We advocate for stronger laws and policies that will reduce gun violence and save lives. We do this because every day, one hundred Americans die from gun violence, and hundreds more are injured. I'm going to repeat that. Every day, a hundred Americans die from gun violence. And according to new data released in February 2020 by the CDC, firearms are now the leading cause of death for American children and teens, surpassing motor vehicle crashes in 2018. Moms Demand Action, we believe that it's possible to support the Second Amendment while also doing much more to keep guns out of the hands of dangerous people, and to create a culture of responsible gun ownership. There are many evidence-based solutions to our gun violence problem, and we do have a problem beyond the background checks for all gun sales. There's safe storage legislation, waiting periods between the initiation of a purchase and final acquisition of that firearm and required firearm training. But with ninety-four percent of American voters, including ninety-two percent of Republicans supporting legislation to close deadly loopholes in our background check system, this is the low-hanging fruit. This isn't partisan. This is a very small first step to addressing the gun violence in our communities. So I urge you to pass special resolution 228 today. Thank you.
If I may, Mr. President, introduce Steve and Cheryl Shockley to share the story of their son, Jack.
Thank you, Councilman Boots, for inviting us to speak to the council tonight. I can only offer my perspective and do not pretend to have any expertise in gun laws. But as a victim of gun violence, I do have some thoughts to share. My son, Jack Shockley, was murdered on August 12, 2020. He was sitting in his car, eating breakfast in the parking lot at McDonald's at 25th and Emerson at 5:00 AM, as he did most mornings, on his way to work at the Green Bean Warehouse nearby. His car was approached by another, and the man driving the car got out and shot Jack at close range. It was a random shooting. Nothing was stolen. The man who shot Jack was out on parole after multiple gun-related crimes. An eyewitness, a pregnant woman who was in the car with the shooter and gave a statement to police, was shot and killed two months later. Another witness is too fearful for his safety to agree to testify, and as a result, the charges against the man who shot our son have been dismissed, although we are still fighting for a trial. Sadly, our experience is not unique. It is all too common, resulting in violent criminals with illegal guns being back on the street. Jack was the heart and soul of our family, his group of friends, and even his workplace. He was kind, funny, super smart, handsome, the life of the party, and a prankster, but he also thoughtfully and prayerfully sought answers to life's sufferings. He read widely and spent time each day alone, reading, praying, and writing. He is irreplaceable, as are all victims of gun homicides. The survivors of gun violence, myself and my family included, suffer with injuries that never end. We share the same wound. Shortly after Jack died, with the help of family and friends, we created the Jack Shockley Warriors for Peace Foundation. Its mission, which reflects Jack's love for the poor and disadvantaged, is to promote peaceful change, one life at a time. We have created a scholarship and mentorship program, and in May awarded our first scholarship to help a young peacemaker, a graduate of Central Catholic Grade School, to attend Roncoli High School. We have also given aid to families of victims of gun violence in our city. This is our response to the spike in gun violence that claimed our son. In Jack's memory, his friends and family are committed to becoming peacemakers and doing our part to make a difference. We have learned that everyone has a part to play to end gun violence. But for that to happen, hearts must change. What is the part that you must play as a council? I urge you to come together in a common sense way to pass this resolution to close the loopholes in background checks. You can make progress in making sure that guns do not fall into the hands of criminals or the mentally ill. That states the obvious, but it has not been done. You also have a role to play in the trafficking and confiscation of illegal guns. My son was killed by a young man with a very long history of gun violations. Why was this dangerous man released on parole and returned to the street? I have come to realize that we need to focus on the shooters who commit these murders, to end the plea deals and the revolving doors of the justice system that allow them to claim more victims. Yes to criminal justice reform that offers drug rehab and vocational training to the prisoners and supports them in living a peaceful life when they are released. No to allowing criminals who commit crimes with a gun back on the streets. And ankle bracelets, ankle bracelets do not contain dangerous criminals. There are many parts that people must step up and play to make a difference in gun violence. Hearts must change. Cultures must change. We must quit fighting each other, stop demonizing the other side, and come together. We must each do our part. With God, nothing is impossible. When we work together, when we do our part, change is possible. I ask you, council members, to come together and do your part. Warriorsforpeace.org is the foundation. Jack's friends and families have joined the fight to promote peace in our broken world. Please join us in our fight to promote peace and reclaim the streets of our city, one life at a time, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no further comments, and I do appreciate the council's support this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, and thank you to the Shockley family for sharing their story The next item on our agenda is proposal number 229, which recognizes IndyStar's 2021 Pulitzer Prize Award in national reporting for their year-long investigation into police dog bites.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thomas Jefferson said, "Our liberty depends on the freedom of the press." And Walter Cronkite also said, "Freedom of the press is not just important to democracy, it is democracy." The press is important at every scale, from international coverage of global events to local coverage of community activities. The press shares with the public our joyous moments and successes, our tragedies, and every item in between. It is important for communities to have a strong local press, despite the national trend to consolidate and streamline, which is why it is important that we celebrate the Indianapolis Star and staff as they receive national recognition. It is worth celebrating. So therefore, a special resolution recognizing IndyStar's 2021 Pulitzer Prize Award in national reporting for their year-long investigation into police dog bites. Whereas the Pulitzer Prize was established in 1917 through provisions... Whereas the Pulitzer Prize was established in 1917 through provisions in the will of Joseph Pulitzer, a renowned newspaper publisher, to recognize achievements in newspaper, magazine, and online journalism, literature, and musical composition within the United States. The award is administered annually by Columbia University and consists of cash prizes in 21 categories, with one category receiving a gold medal. And...
Whereas on Friday, June 11th, 2021, the 105th class of Pulitzer Prize winners were announced. The staff of IndyStar Indianapolis, The Marshall Project, AL.com Birmingham, and The Invisible Institute Chicago were awarded the prestigious honor in the category of national reporting for their collaborative 2020 year-long investigation into canine units and the damage that police dogs inflict on Americans, including innocent citizens and police officers entitled "Mauled When Police Dogs Are Weapons." And...
Whereas the reporting led by IndyStar's reporter Ryan Martin, photojournalist Macal Mackel Downey, graphics reporter Stephen Beard, and news director Alvy Lindsay has also been recognized by the White House Correspondents' Association and received the Katherine Graham Award for courage and accountability. And...
Whereas the series of articles has prompted numerous statewide reforms, including changes to the Indianapolis Metropolitan Police Department's policy regarding canine units. Catrice Hardy, the IndyStar Executive Director and Midwest Regional Editor for USA Today Network, exclaimed, "As honored as we are about this esteemed recognition, it doesn't come close to the fact that now others in our community might not be hurt or mauled by a canine innocently or wrongly because of the IndyStar's investigation." And...
Whereas this is IndyStar's third Pulitzer Prize with their first in 1975 for a series on corruption in the Indianapolis Police Department, and a subsequent win in 1991 for an investigation on medical malpractice. Now, therefore... Be it resolved by the City County Council of the City of Indianapolis and of Marion County, Indiana. Section 1, the Indianapolis City County Council proudly recognizes IndyStar on winning the 2021 Pulitzer Prize Award in national reporting for their investigative series, "Mauled When Police Dogs Are Weapons."
Section 2, the council further congratulates those staff members directly involved in the investigation and reporting, which has led to statewide canine reforms, ensuring increased public safety for citizens and police officers alike. Section 3, the mayor is invited to join in this resolution by affixing his signature heretofu.
Section 4, this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance with IC 363414. And, Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good, the motion carries. And comments from counselors?
Mr. President, if you will allow, Indianapolis Star reporter Ryan Martin is here. I'd like to invite him up to share a few words.
Please.
Hello, everyone. Normally, I sit over there or back there, so this is unusual for me. I'm here representing the Indianapolis Star. My other colleagues couldn't make it this evening, but we just want to say we're very thankful for the honor and the recognition. And while we appreciate this recognition for the Star, we also recognize that an awful lot of people in our community gave a lot of themselves, a lot of their time, not only for this investigation, but for a number of the others that we do, so we hope that they also get to share in the honor as well. At the Star, we believe in providing a voice to the voiceless. We believe in providing a check on power, whether that's inside or outside government And there's no question that the act of journalism is experiencing some pains right now across the country, but when I see all of you counselors speaking in support of the Star and what we do, it just helps me know, it helps remind me that here in Indianapolis, we have an awful lot of people who still value and still support the act of journalism. And on behalf of the Star, I just want to say again, we really appreciate that. Thank you so much.
The next item on our agenda is proposal number 230, which recognizes former Marion County Prosecutor Terry Curry by committee of the whole.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a very special, special resolution recognizing a great man, a former Marion County Prosecutor Terry Curry. Whereas Prosecutor Curry graduated from Butler University in 1971 and Indiana University Law School in 1978 after two years of service in the U.S. Army. And whereas Curry, whose career spanned over 30 years, began his career with Marion County in 2004 as a deputy prosecutor under then-prosecutor Stephen Goldsmith, where he was primarily responsible for the prosecution of white-collar crime and political corruption matters. He assisted on cases outside of his area of a primary responsibility, and as a deputy prosecutor prosecuted hundreds of cases, including murder, robbery, burglary, forgery, theft, and drug offenses. And whereas Curry was elected Marion County Prosecutor in 2010, re-elected in 2014 and 2018, and is believed to be the only three-term Democrat prosecutor in Marion County. And whereas during his 10 years prosecutor, Curry was committed to rebuilding the integrity and trust of the prosecutor's office. He took steps to establish a culture of bipartisan professionalism and integrity that endeared him to the staff and to the public. And whereas as Marion County Prosecutor, Curry established a significant policy legacy, not only in criminal justice reform, but also as an outspoken and respected advocate for marriage equality, Indiana's Second Chance Law, a comprehensive state hate crimes law, and responsible gun ownership laws. And whereas Terry Curry passed from this life on Tuesday, June 29th, 2021. And whereas the death of Terry Curry does not diminish the profound body of work that he leaves as an example, nor our admiration of and affection for him as a dedicated public servant. And whereas the family and acquaintances of Terry are deeply saddened at his departure, as are all who are touched by his courageous spirit and kindness. And whereas Terry's legacy of faith and service will continue to inspire his loved ones and all who knew him, now therefore, be it resolved by the City County Council of the City of Indianapolis and of Marion County, Indiana. Section 1, the Indianapolis City County Council recognizes the service and accomplishments of Terry Curry, former Marion County Prosecutor. Section 2, the council offers the family of Terry Curry our heartfelt thoughts and prayers and our sincerest condolences. And, Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Back to you, Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah. I was just going to say very briefly that, you know, over the past almost two years, he's received several accolades, and his response every time is always, "Really? Me? Seriously?" He was humble to the very end, but what I can genuinely say is, among all of his accolades, this resolution would have ranked probably at the very top because he considered so many of you his friends, and we thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 212, referred to Public Works Committee. Chairman Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I'd like to take proposals 1, 212, and 213 together.
Consent.
Thank you. Proposal number 212 appoints Dan Hague to the Board of Public Works, and proposal number 213 appoints Sabeke Jawanza to the Board of Public Works, and both appointments passed the committee with a vote of 10 to 0, well, Dan's passed by a vote of 11 to 0, and I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from counselors? Right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 25 to 0. The next item on the agenda is proposal number 214, referred to Public Works Committee. Chairman Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 214 appoints, reappoints Henry Fernandez to the Board of Public Works, and that proposal passed the committee with a vote of 11 to 0, and I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from counselors? Seeing none, proceed to the board for our vote. Counselor Brown.
Mr. President, I need to abstain from this vote as Mr. Fernandez is my campaign treasure, and I don't want to muddy his waters.
Very good. Thank you, Counselor Brown. The motion carries 24 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 215, referred to Administration and Finance Committee. Chairman Maschary.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal 215, 221, appoints Abel Contreras to the Indianapolis Marion County Building Authority of Trustees. Passed 9-0. I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from counselors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. The motion carries 25 to 0. The next item on our agenda is introduction of proposals. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 216, introduced by Counselor Maschary, referred to the Administration and Finance Committee, approves the mayor's appointment of Joe Glass as the Director of the Office of Audit and Performance. Proposal number 217, introduced by Counselor Jackson, referred to the Parks and Recreation Committee, establishes interest in the purchase of real estate at 10702 East 25th Street for the purposes of the Department of Public, I'm sorry, the Department of Parks and Recreation, which property is owned by Jay Levinson. Proposal numbers 218 through 222 were referred to the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Proposal number 218, introduced by Counselor Carlino, amends the code to increase the sales disclosure fee in compliance with IC 6-1.1-5.5-4. Proposal number 219, introduced by Counselor Jones, approves the statement of benefits of BWI LLC and 1202 LP, an applicant for tax abatement for property located in an economic revitalization area. Proposal number 220, introduced by Counselor Jay Evans, approves the statement of benefits of Micronutrients USA LLC, an applicant for tax abatement for property located in an economic revitalization area. Proposal number 221, introduced by Counselor Adamson, authorizes the issuance of economic development tax increment revenue bonds in a maximum aggregate principal amount not to exceed $3,750,000 to 1820 Ventures LLC for the Elevator Hill Phase 1 project located in the Elevator Hill Expansion allocation area at approximately 1117 East Market Street in District 17. Proposal number 222, introduced by Counselor Jones, authorizes the issuance of economic development tax increment revenue bonds in a maximum aggregate principal amount not to exceed $8,660,000 to TWG Development LLC for the Rise on Meridian project located in the South Meridian allocation area at approximately 915 South Meridian Street in District 16. Proposal numbers 223 through 226 were referred to the Public Works Committee. Proposal number 223, introduced by Counselor Potts, authorizes intersection controls and parking restrictions near 46, I mean, sorry. I'm sorry, near 64th Street and Broadway in District 2. Proposal number 224, introduced by Counselor Maury, authorizes intersection controls at Hunter's Crossing Boulevard and Wild Turkey Drive, and a speed limit reduction to 25 miles per hour in the Hunter's Crossing Estates and Fox Hollow subdivisions in District 25. Proposal number 225, introduced by Counselor Carlino, authorizes a speed limit reduction to 25 miles per hour in the Country Club Estates, Country Charm, Country Charm 2, Country Point, Country Point 2, and Country Creek Villas subdivisions in District 6. Proposal number 226, introduced by Counselor Jackson, authorizes a speed limit reduction to 25 miles per hour in the Indian Creek section, Bells Run, Farmington, and Glick's East 42nd Street addition subdivisions in District 14. Proposal number 245, introduced by Counselors Barth, Potts, Jones, Boots, and Lewis, referred to the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, approves an additional appropriation of $133,542 in the 2021 budget of the Indianapolis Metropolitan Police Department, IMPD, General Fund, for the purposes of preventing excessive speed and reckless driving in target areas through active traffic enforcement. Proposal number 246 through 248 were referred to the Community Affairs Committee and were introduced by Counselor Jackson. Proposal number 246 appoints Kate Howe to the Indianapolis Community Food Access Advisory Commission. Proposal number 247 appoints Julie Burns to the Indianapolis Community Food Access Advisory Commission. And proposal 248 appoints Sharona Moore to the Indianapolis Community Food Access Advisory Commission. Mr. President, this concludes the introductions.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is special orders priority business. Proposal numbers 231 through 244, 2021, are all rezoning ordinances certified for approval by the Metropolitan Development Commission. If no one wishes to call any of these proposals down for public hearing, they will pass into law. Does anyone wish to call down any of the rezonings? Counselor Boots.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to clarify, did you mention I have a conflict with a couple of proposals, and I want to make sure I just heard you properly. Are we on 236? Is that part of, included in what you've just said?
Yes.
I must abstain or divide the question. I cannot vote on that proposal.
All right. What is the pleasure of the council? Should we divide this? All right. Counselor Boots, our council basically has said, "We're not voting." So all we would be doing would be calling it down, and if we're not calling it down, there is no reason for you to abstain. Very good. All right. Because there is no vote. So thank you, council. Counsel... So thank you, council. Counselor Kim, does anyone wish to call down any of these rezonings? All right, seeing none, Proposal Numbers 231 through 244, 2021, will pass into law. The next item on our agenda is Special Orders. Public hearing. Proposal Number 179, referred to Administration and Finance Committee. Chairman Maschary.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal 179 approves an additional appropriation of three, $33,522,259 to the 2021 Non-Department Budget Coronavirus Relief Fund to help address the demand for residential rental assistance for Marion County who have been impacted by the pandemic. I so move.
Motion is improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? Counselor Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this body and the administration are to be commended. I think something to the tune of $10 million, no, $100 million by the time this is all over in rental assistance. Is that accurate? Is there somebody that can speak to that? Just so the public is aware of how much went into rental assistance.
Is there anyone here from the administration who would like to speak to this?
Yes.
You're not with the administration.
Public comment, though?
No.
No?
All right, very good. We don't have anyone here from the administration to speak to.
Here comes Taylor.
Hi, good evening, council. Tomorrow marks the one-year anniversary of the rental assistance program. In total, we've given out more than $50 million in rental assistance. We hope that number at the end of the program is near 100, but right now, we're still working through the allocation streams that we've received through the federal government and are continuing to have conversations with community partners, the state, in order to ensure those dollars are being utilized appropriately.
So $50 million thus far?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Very good. Is there anyone in the public who would like to comment on Proposal Number 179?
Yes, Larry Vaughn, please. You know, I can't believe I'm sitting up here in these chambers, listening to grown men and women talk of rejoicing over a pandemic. What's going to happen next year? I think this council and the mayor have been so reckless by closing down our businesses during this pandemic, by closing down our convention business and so forth, which will never, never recover. So many of my friends have been put out of businesses and all you can do is sit up in here and rejoice, and rejoice, and talk about, it is your main. It's only two minutes, Bob.
All right. Mr. Vaughn?
Look, I mean.
Will you speak to Proposal 179?
I am speaking to it when I say that it's just a shame for you to sit up here and rejoice about sickness and disease and how you've put people out of business, their life savings wasted, and you're sitting up here talking about a rental program that can never be sustained. What are you going to do next year? Have another pandemic to rake in some money? The state of Indiana is guilty of the same thing because they've been negligent and our dimwit governor have closed this state down.
Wait, wait, stop, stop, stop.
Thank you.
We are not going to, we are not going to be abusing people in this room. So, Mr. Vaughn, if you speak again, we're not calling another person by any name. Is that clear?
I understand, Mr. President. Thank you.
Are there any additional comments on Proposal Number 179?
Yes, Ashley Gervitz, community service provider within Northeast Indy. First and foremost, I understand where Mr. Vaughn is, talking about the impact, the hurt that's been on business, but in addition to Proposal 179, I do want to say thank you because knowing firsthand the critical need that we've experienced not having a community center in our backyard. When it came to understanding where we need to go, having that centralized network, we've been able to actually get people the assistance that they need. Now, granted, are there some things that need to be approved? Yes, and I'm not going to fault that. However, process-wise and knowing that there had been hope, especially from some families that we've been dealing with directly with gun violence, they got their help and were able to be relocated in a timely manner. So I just wanted to come up to make sure that point, in fact, with this proposal was not forgotten. So I just want to say thank you and approve that.
Thank you, Ms. Gervitz. Is there anyone else who would like to comment on Proposal Number 179?
I do. Mr. President?
All right, seeing no one, Counselor Jackson.
I just wanted to say, yes, the state and county and city was closed for a prolonged period of time, but there was at a point that the president urged us to close down for a period of time, too. So for the well-being of everyone, because we didn't know how this pandemic was going to go. So it's still manifesting. People are still now back on ventilators, if you haven't heard. So, you know, I'm thankful for those who are, if I work in the industry, with the people that receive this assistance. And without this assistance, some wouldn't have been able to be housed or be able to get the assistance that they needed. So I will just say on behalf of the constituents I serve, I will be thankful for them because they said to us they're thankful. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there additional comments from councilors? Counselor Maury.
Thank you, Mr. President. For clarification for everyone watching at home as well as here, this money, can that be spent outside of rental assistance? Like, could it go towards small businesses that have been affected in this pandemic?
Just a moment. I'll have someone from, ask someone from the administration to provide an answer. Deputy Mayor Bennett, thank you.
Mr. President, thank you. Jeff Bennett, Deputy Mayor of Community Development. No, these are rental assistance-specific funds. They were created through the American Rescue Plan out of a program called the Emergency Rental Assistance Program, so it's solely for that use.
Yes, Counselor Maury.
Quick follow-up. And that is residential rental?
That is correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Additional questions from councilors? Counselor Hart.
Thank you, Mr. President. We might need Deputy Mayor Bennett to come back, so don't go too far. Just for everybody watching, for clarification purposes, just want to validate the source of the funds, that they are federal funds, and if so, which package they came from.
So the round that you're considering tonight came through the American Rescue Plan that was passed earlier this year, so they're federal funds from that source called Emergency Rental Assistance Two, in the sort of federal lingo, with Emergency Rental Assistance One coming to us through CARES Act Two that was passed last December.
Beautiful. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Very good. Thank you, counselor. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Any additional questions from councilors? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed now to the Board for our vote. Proposal 179. Motion carries twenty-four to zero. The next item on our agenda is Proposal Number 182, referred to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal 182, 2021, approves an additional appropriation totaling $3,311,371 in the 2021 budget of the Information Service Agency, Indianapolis Special Police Department, and the Office of Health and Public, Office of Public Health and Safety, and the General, solidity County General Funds to support a collective community's approach to public safety. Kathy Davis, Assistant Advisor to the Mayor's Office, IMPD Chief Randall Taylor and Deputy Chief Chris Bailey, Lorna Rodriguez, Director of the Office of Public Health and Safety, and Elliot Patrick, the Director of Information Services Agency, all ran through a power presentation to my committee back in June. Deputy Chief Bailey stated that IMPD's goal are to reduce violent crime, response time, track and report racial equity, improve community trust, and reduce complaints against officers and non-law enforcement and behavioral health response. Chief Bailey stated that their portion of appropriations for data preparation and quality for $400,000, officers' early warning system for $170,000, and a data team for $220,000 for six months. Ms. Rodriguez gave an update on the AIC. She stated that their portion of the appropriation, which is $681,371, which includes three medics, RNs, 2.8 housing staff, three full-time clinicians, and benefits in housing overhead allocation. Mr. Patrick of ISA stated that his portion of the fiscal is covering two pieces of software that Chief Bailey mentioned. He said that their total will be $730,000, which will be for a situational awareness and community interaction system and technology infrastructure and hardware investment. Director Rodriguez discussed the community programming portion of the fiscal, which is $1.1 million, that will go towards domestic violence reduction, victim response and resource services and advocates, mental health services, dispatch and trauma resources, juvenile intervention rehabilitation services, which consists of grant programs, youth-focused rehabilitation camp, and at-risk youth programs. Counselor Evans moved to amend Proposal 182 by striking the ISA portion and the IMPD portion of the funding proposal. The motion to amend failed by a vote of three to eight with Councilors René, Bain, Dilk, Maury, Boots, Jay Evans, Carlino, and Robinson casting negative votes. Counselor Maury moved, seconded by Counselor Boots, to send Proposal 182 to the full council. They do pass recommendation. Mr. President, the motion carried by a vote of eleven to zero, I so move.
The motion is improperly moved and seconded. I do understand that Counselor Ethan Evans has submitted a motion to amend Proposal Number 182, 2021. That should be included in all counselors packets. Counselor Ethan Evans.
Thank you, President Osley. I'm going to go ahead and retract my motion to amend at this time.
Thank you very much, Counselor Ethan Evans. I also understand that Counselor René has also submitted a motion to amend Proposal Number 182, 2021. That should also be included in all counselors packets. Counselor René.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I move to amend Section Two, Proposal Number 182, 2021, by deleting the language that is stricken through and adding the underlined language to read as follows. Section Two, the underlined addition will read such as a gunshot detection system and mobile and status, static license plate readers. So Section Two will fully read, "The Information Services Agency requests additional appropriations totaling $730,000 in the Information Services Agency fund in character three for the purposes of funding public safety technology, infrastructure, and hardware investments, such as a gunshot detection system and mobile and static license plate readers." Mr. President, I so move.
This motion's improperly moved and seconded. Comments? Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. As a sponsor of this proposal, I ask my colleagues to not support this amendment. I do respect Counselor René's proposal and his motion, and Counselor Maury's seconded. However, I would like to hear from the chief or deputy chief Adams on the aspects of this amendment. Mr. President, my request. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, councilors.
Welcome, Deputy Chief.
Thank you for the proposed amendment. We in IMPD have strategically, over the last few years, really tried to strategically implement our technology. As you know, we have introduced a new CAD, we've introduced body cameras, and as Assistant Chief Bailey discussed, we are really trying to become more focused on really dealing with the criminal element. One of the things this proposal talks about is ShotSpotter, right? And so we've looked at that technology. It's an expensive technology. When you look at that technology today, or at least a couple of years ago, it was a $250,000 investment plus another $200,000 per year to maintain. It's a software with technology that triangulates gunshots by a three-mile contiguous area. So that technology, without the enhancement around our CIGIC, for example, without the enhancement of our gun detectives, without the availability of surveillance cameras, just makes it really a very expensive product to implement today. Now, we continue to look at technology. We continue to evaluate that, more nimble technology. We work with our deputy chief of administration to prioritize our technology, and we're looking at emerging technology that can go mobile, for example, instead of having to get with a business owner to place a sensor on a building, for example. We're looking at maybe placing some gunshot detection equipment on our mobile trailers. That is obviously much more cost-effective. Again, these are continuing conversations we have with ISA. When we look at these technologies, we have a chief technology officer, and we try to evaluate those technologies as they come in. I just counsel the, or caution the council today because these technologies, one, they're expensive and they require a lot of uplift. And so as we try to refine our CAD and the data technology or data analysts that we're trying to hire through this fiscal, we want to be mindful of that. One of the, one of the issues or one of the alignments in the fiscal allows us to really look at our data and really analyze our data. We talk about data all the time, and the police department, just like many city agencies, is rich in data, but what we lack is enough analysis to really pinpoint where we should send our resources and be effective with that. So again, I can appreciate the amendments and certainly it's technology that we continue to look at, but I think at this time, it just makes it very difficult for us to be strategic and really be efficient with this kind of proposal.
Mr. President?
Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Deputy Chief. Thank you, Mr. President. Deputy Chief, is it fair to say that, Deputy Chief, is it fair to say that these two aspects of this amendment, the department, the department wouldn't support it this time?
That is correct. It's continued to be technology we look at, but at this time, it just would not be fiscally responsible.
Thank you, Deputy Chief. Again, Mr. President, as a sponsor of the proposal, I'll ask our colleagues not to support this amendment as we move forward to a vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there additional comments? Counselor René.
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Chief. Should I assume that's the official position of the Indianapolis Police Chief and then Assistant Indianapolis Police Chief? And if so, are they present in the chamber? Thank you, Chief. You know, we talk about too expensive. The city of Indianapolis, over a very short period of time, has spent over $17 million, $17 million to combat crime in this city, and we are seeing crime, the likes of which the city of Indianapolis has never seen in the history since our city was founded. And tonight, we're coming back for three, a little over $3 million more, so I'm concerned if somebody says it's too expensive. And I believe that while these proposals are putting money at initiatives that frankly we've thrown money at before and they haven't seemed to work, I believe that looking at these new technologies, the gunshot detection systems, and the mobile and static license plate readers are important for our city because these dollars are not providing the immediate relief that the citizens of the city of Indianapolis need. And I believe that these technologies would, in fact, provide the immediate relief that the citizens of the city of Indianapolis would need. And so I would ask my colleagues to support the amendment as I believe it's very important to combating the public safety crisis that our city has been experiencing for some time. I obey.
Councilman, if I could comment, you know, I have deep respect for you and I understand truly where you're coming from. However, in our research of ShotSpotter in particular, you know, I'm not afraid to spend money. However, I think it would be wise for us to hold back on this particular investment at this time. I think there is emerging technology that is coming forth that will do as good a job, if not better, at a lesser cost to the citizens of Indianapolis, and that's where I stand.
Thank you, Chief. You're welcome. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, my final comment, as we heard from the deputy chief and our chief of our city, we'd ask at this point for our colleagues to not support this amendment going forward. Thank you. Thank you.
Any additional comments from counselors? Seeing none, I will ask if there is anyone in the audience who would like to speak to proposal number 182. Stop. Very good. And anyone who's speaking, you will have two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, President Osley, and to the other counselors and ladies and gentlemen. I greet you in the name of my Savior, Yeshua Hamashiach. You probably know him by his Christian name, Jesus the Christ. I'm Minister Dave Rozell, and I serve as pastor and teacher for the Way of Yeshua Fellowship and Ministries here in Indianapolis. Though I served in a number of capacities since retiring after a 20-year career as a U.S. Navy broadcast journalist, including minister for community outreach and media services at Light of the World Christian Church, executive director of offender aid and restoration of Marion County, case manager in Marion County Drug Court 14 under the Honorable Judge David Shahi, executive director of the Indianapolis Commission on African-American males, and a special assistant to the Public Safety Director Earl Morgan, among several other positions of service. But this evening, I stand before you representing the Veterans Association of African Descendants, or VAD. We're here to speak to fiscal ordinance proposal number 182 in response to Mayor Hoxsey's plan to spend an additional $3.3 million in funding to address our rising violence in our city. As veterans, we don't disagree with spending these funds. Let me be clear about that. Our concern is with the distribution of the funds. Specifically, we challenged the statement in the mayor's press release announcing that read, and I quote, "This is going to build upon a violence reduction strategy that balances community-based programming with a dynamic law enforcement approach."
Sir.
The reason why... Beg your pardon.
I'll give you just a few more seconds, but you need to wrap up.
Yeah. The reason why we, the reason why we're concerned is because as we analyze these funds, a full $1.5 million is going to IMPD for investment. Whereas in community investment is $390,000, or 11% of the 1.7 million for the community.
Sir.
We don't see balance there.
We'll have to end it here. Thank you.
Well, okay. I saw everybody else stand up here and say everything they had to say, five minutes, 10 minutes, but I only get two minutes?
Sir, sir, we have two minutes. Thank you, sir.
Did you all understand what I said?
Yes.
All I ask for you to do is consider spending more on community programs instead of just giving it all to the police. Thank you, sir.
Mr. President.
Mr. President. Counselor Maury.
Are we hearing on the amendment right now?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're clear on that. So it's on the amendment, not the proposal itself.
So that was not on the proposal? That was just on the amendment?
Yes, sir. We are still in the amendment.
So I'll give a chance to speak again on the proposal?
You will have a chance to speak again on the proposal, sir. So just to be clear, we are speaking on the amendment, and we have a two-minute limit. So please.
Okay. I was not going to speak on the amendment.
You're going to speak on the amendment?
I was not.
Okay. So this is for...
I'll wait until...
Yeah.
I take two shots. It's Larry Vaughn, please.
Mr. Vaughn, hold on a second. Hold on a second. Let's be clear. Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
You're going to speak to the amendment?
I'm going to be germane, Mr. President. Be in germane tonight. But, you know, I'm not surprised. But these people who are here talking about defunding the police, it's already been done when they passed, when this council passed proposal number 112 and created the Office of the Health and Safety, added on to IMPD. So we can look forward to, over the years, more and more of the so-called budget of IMPD, which does not resist, not exist. It's a fiction. IMPD has no budget. All their money, after it's appropriated by this council, is dipped into the mayor's general fund to do what he wants to do.
I'm sorry, Mr. Vaughn?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. But I just want to...
Is this, is this...
It is. I'm trying to come to my point right now.
Please get back to it.
I just wanted to say that they've already defunded the police as you, as you're here tonight to protest because they've created this situation where they're trying to...
Mr. President, are there some comments on the amendment somewhere in there?
On public health. They can never do it.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn.
You can never care a bunch of...
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn.
Self-imposed impairments.
My name is Connie Thompson. I'm an organizer with the Indianapolis branch of the Party for Socialism and Liberation. And I want to say that this amendment to this bill does not fundamentally change this bill in any sort of way. When people, tens of thousands of people hit the streets last year, they didn't say, "Defund the police," except for surveillance equipment. They said, "Defund the police." They didn't say, "Defund the police," except for gunshot detectors. They said, "Defund the police." They were clear and concise and to the point. And that point is being deliberately ignored. It's, what is happening here in this room is an abortion of democracy. We aren't being represented. The majority of the people in this council are Democrats, and they're supposed to, they're supposed to be the ones who represent the kinds of people who marched last year, the people who are progressively-minded, who want to see positive change. But we're here discussing an amendment over the minutia of what exactly this money is going, what exactly surveillance equipment is going to be spent? Whereas the message in the first place was clear. "Defund the police."
Hello. My name is Belinda Snowden. I'm just a community member. As it has been said, I was one of the people that was out here last year, marching, saying, "Defund the IMPD." I think we should abolish it, but we'll just go, okay? We'll just go with defunding for now. But I am shocked that the Deputy Chief and actual Chief Randall Taylor are saying that they do not want Amendment 182? Is that what I'm hearing? Okay. So I'm surprised. But like, my fear is that if they don't get this money, what is the money going to go towards? Is it going to go back to the department? Because they don't need it. Like, I'm seeing too many houseless members on the streets. That money can be used to help them out. It can be used to help out our schools and stuff, so... I mean, you're shaking your head. Do you have something to say, or...? Oh, okay. So it's going to keep going to the police to harass? Oh, okay, yeah. Help me understand. So I mean, that's all I got to say. Defund IMPD, so...
Hello. My name is Jonathan Howe. I wanted to talk about the amendment. It's my understanding that IMPD pretty much just said that they don't even want to spend this money on this technology. I just had a question for the counselor who was kind of pushing this technology, Counselor René, if that's correct. Hopefully I pronounced that right. Sorry, I served in the military. I want to know, have you served in the military or the police department or the fire department?
What a order, Mr. President.
Sir, sir, sir.
I just want to know what expertise he had, that, why he was supporting this technology. I don't know if it's based off any service.
Sir, actually, your, your time here is to make a comment. We're not questioning the comment.
Oh, we're not allowed to ask questions?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, lords and ladies of the court. If it pleases the crown, oh.
Thank you.
Sinclair Williams, proud resident of District 17. Property taxpayer on commercial and residential properties. I'm actually here to speak positively to the amendment that was proposed, particularly the tag reader, license plate reader. Why? Because it could generate revenue. That should be the focus. Generating revenue. We know how to spend it. Let's generate it. And if we're spending it, maybe it's a good idea. Perhaps it's a good idea to spend it in a manner that generates more revenue. Thank you.
Wait a second. I just want to piggyback or guess kind of comment on that real quick. A lot of that revenue is coming from black and brown bodies. So the police coming to giving more money to them is only increasing, or not increasing, but... Well, actually, I guess we can talk about the increasing of how the more money we give to IMPD, we're actually seeing an increase in black people being, um, and black people being abused. You know, so to me, it doesn't make sense as to why we're up here actively wanting to give more money to them. What we're seeing, we are seeing where, like, what that's leading to. And not only that, last year, I don't know if y'all noticed that, because this is straight from IMPD's database. But not only did the amount of black people being murdered go up, also the amount of white people being abused went down as well. So yeah, I'm going to just say, "Defund the police." Say no to proposal 182. Care for the community. Don't keep giving money to IMPD when they're not doing anything with it, except abusing the community. Your community is begging. We are begging and pleading, y'all, to care about us, not to care about a group of people, a gang, basically, that is abusing us, killing us, that is using our bodies to create this revenue that he was talking about. So yeah. Just, yeah. Thank you.
How y'all doing today? Hi, I'm Trey John Reed. Y'all are trying to amend, or whatever you're trying to do. I don't understand the logic, sort of rigmarole, what's going on. But the camera equipment, what's going on is for, what is it? License plate readers? It's some people that own cars who had a pass, and that's going to continue to hurt us. It's not going to help us. Surveillance, that's not going to help us either. It's not, that's not used to help us. Y'all just want the money so y'all can do y'all other endeavors. I don't understand what's, y'all, basically, y'all just blue falcons. Any of my military friends that was in the military understand that. Y'all blue falcons with the IMPD. Y'all just want more money, just like the rest, just like Eli Lilly out West. It's not, it's not working, so... I just can't put my, I know it's not going to change. But I just can't put my input in. Y'all have a nice day. BF's.
Hello. My name is Kari Hogs. I'm also just a community member, but I am here with the Indiana Youth Commission. I am against this amendment. And I just have a small comment. I'm going to read from my phone real quick. Violent crime is a public health concern, and we should treat it as such. With the current global pandemic, instead of using our resources towards finding a cure, we rightfully focus our resources towards finding a vaccine right away to present more, to prevent more death in our communities. We saw and experienced millions of lives lost, but knew that an equitable solution to an ongoing problem was to understand it and try to change its course rather than to watch it take more lives and wait until people die to try and fix it. In the same sense that we strengthened our offense with COVID-19, we need to do the same with violent crimes in Indianapolis. We need to see that most violent crime in our city stems from an age-old system built for black and brown people, black and brown people to fail, and that we should do our best to tear down the system and build up the communities that it broke. If you vote to give the IMPD half of the budget today, you vote for defense, and you're waiting on people to die to care about them again. And mostly... And most importantly, you vote against this community. Stop criminalizing everyone. I'm sorry. I got really emotional. Sorry. I know, I know. But I'm just saying that if you really care about the community and you want to see everyone get better, we need to stop wasting our money on cameras and start spending our money on things that can actually prevent people from committing crimes, help people out with housing, help people out with mental health support and all of that. So thank you.
All right, very good. Thank you very much. Additional comments from counselors? Counselor Jones, did you have a comment you wanted to make? All right, very good. There is an amendment on the floor to proposal number 182. If there are no additional comments, I'd like to, to take a vote on, on that amendment. Sorry, that motion fails 20 to 5. Is there any additional comment on proposal 182? Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. My position remains the same as the amendment fails. I'd ask my colleagues to support proposal 182 as we've worked very hard with the administration, with IMPD, our community partners to address the issues of domestic violence, mental health, juvenile trauma, and also some of the requests of IMPD as a conference proposal. Again, I'd ask our colleagues to support the proposal as a capacity committee, 11 to zero. I'd like to get a unanimous support tonight as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Counselor Hart.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to make a few comments. I do have a few reservations about proposal 182. Some of the members of this committee may know that I've been, you know, working on a proposal that really outlines the accountability and transparency of the dollars that we are spending towards reducing violent crime. And I see these additional appropriations in the same fashion that, you know, we continue to spend and appropriate dollars towards a specific initiative, but yet our crime rates continue to rise. So I'm starting to lose confidence in the expenditures that we're creating, and I feel the same with this. And so, you know, I want to believe and I want to put my trust in the Chief of Police that he's been a person who has worked in this role as chief and is every way up to it, that he has the best regard for the position and knowledge and knows the expenditures of how they're going to better the city of Indianapolis. But, you know, with this, we're on track to spending, you know, over $20 million in the last five years towards reducing violent crime, but we're not doing it. So I will support this proposal, but just know that I am very reluctant on the dollars that we're spending because we are not getting the results that we need. Thank you, Mr. President. I yield back.
Very good. Counselor? Counselor Maury.
Thank you, Mr. President. While I support that IMPD has expressed the need for this funding, I am happy to support this in that effect. However, I look at this as more as an investment in the long term, considering the amount of time that it will take to get this into the, into the community. I'm hoping that as a council body, as we move forward, we can start looking at more immediate measures to combat violent crime rather than what we're doing now. Hopefully, looking at reallocating some of our funding to different areas to help combat violent crime. And I would even be interested in welcoming some of these folks from the people that we've heard this evening to let us know what their idea is to combat violent crime. heard this evening, to let us know what their idea is to combat violent crime. And I would very much so support this proposal, but I, as a long-term investment, rather than a short-term solution.
Very good. Counselor Nae.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to say that when we take a look at what's going on in our city, it's a sad situation all around as it relates to crime and violence. And so I believe today that we must bring a coalition of stakeholders to the table. That includes Marion County Prosecutor, includes Marion County Sheriff, city councilors, mayor's office, and others, to address the problem. And while I believe this money is providing potential long-term solutions, I don't see it as providing immediate relief to our citizens, as I just noted. So I believe that gunshot detection systems, the license plate readers, as well as the 24-hour staffing of the arrestee processing center, and ceasing automatic low bonds for repeatedly convicted felons for all new Level 6 felonies charged, is essential in reducing the violent crime in our city, taking folks off the street who not, should not be on our streets, and trying to provide the immediate relief that our citizens are so desperately asking for. I yield back.
Very good. Counselor Bane.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to share the same views as the fellow councilors that just spoke, because I have some concerns with this as well. You know, it doesn't even come close to begin to scratch the surface of the public safety crisis that our city is facing. You know, even, that's even the same language that the administration has used. They acknowledge this is a public safety crisis, but yet this is the plan, and I really hope this is just the beginning of the plan, and that we'll see some new bold, fresh ideas coming from the administration in the coming days and weeks. I want to thank Counselor Nae for his amendment that was at least proactive in introducing some new proposals and strategies that we can do. And I know IMPD is going through a lot right now, and I just want them to know that on the southwest side of Indianapolis, the district I represent, you're more than welcome to come to my community at any time. Thank you.
Very good. Counselor Ethan Evans.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I just want to say I appreciate some of the comments heard today, and also would agree we need stakeholders in the conversation from the community point of view as well, because they are the ones who are going to be affected by our investments in the community, long-term and short-term. And I wanted to just push back a little bit on some of the investments brought up about the gunshot detection system, and that any investment we make in regards to those technology systems is going to be, by definition, a longer-term investment by default, because of how long it takes to install the systems and the coordination it would take with the other systems they defined with the readers, the cameras, and everything else that the deputy chiefs and the other chiefs also told us about today. So, but that doesn't mean that a longer-term solution isn't what we would need, and that doesn't mean that you were against public safety if you were saying you're going to be for a longer-term solution in our community. That just means you're going around an alternative, alternative solution. You're going to be funding the community in ways that have longer-lasting solutions to deeply ingrained problems that have been here for decades, and that is what I believe we need. Thank you.
Good. Chairwoman Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I hear everything that the constituents are saying, folks in the audience, as well as my colleagues, and many of you may not remember, and some may be too young, but there is a program called Federal Program Weed and Seed, and I think we need to get back to that. We weed out the bed and provide, the seed was the programming part, and I think that's what we're hearing here today. What are we doing if we doing the seed? We're hearing a lot of seed part, but, I mean, weed part, what is the seeding part? And so we do hear you, there are many councilors who are advocating for that and working on that. And then I hear a lot of colleagues saying we spend a lot of money. Seventeen million dollars for the metropolitan size of Indianapolis, folks, based on the studies, I'm just gonna keep it real, is not a lot of money to spend on crime prevention or intervention. We have not done enough crime prevention and human investment in dollars, period. You can look it up yourself, you ain't gotta believe me. It's not enough money on the law enforcement end, nor is it enough money for the community and human investment side, either one. So there are some things we're gonna have to take a deep dive, and the public's gonna have to, and the taxpayers gonna have to decide, what do we really want? Just like we did for Indigo, and we did a referendum, y'all ain't gotta look at me, we're gonna have to make a decision at some point. For Indigo, most of us pay a hundred dollars a year, and that's about 56 million dollars a year. I did the math, and we pay about forty-six dollars a year, that's about 34 million dollars a year. That could take us a whole long way if we really want to hit on the policing, law enforcement side, and that, that seed side, that programming, community, mental health, domestic violence, putting some money, seeing some centers and some stuff we want to see in our community. I'm in a food desert. I'm in District 14, Far East Side, y'all don't heard of it. We gotta take a hard look in what we really want to do. I'm hearing y'all, because I live it every day, I live on the Far East Side, we gotta live in our districts. So I hear the complaints, and I understand, I hear what y'all saying. So, and I agree with a lot what y'all saying. I'm not saying I don't disagree. So we gotta come to the middle of the road, and we gotta take a hard look at what it is we really want to do, both short-term and long-term, to get to what we want to do for our city and to stop this violence that's going on and this crime in our city. So that's just my comment, my feedback on that. Are we spending enough? I'm just gonna tell you the truth, look it up yourself. To this point, to this day, on either end, we have not spent enough for a city this size. Thank you.
Thank you. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to echo Counselor Chairwoman Jackson's comments, just so she know that 17 million over the last three or four years is about 4 million a year, which is 3/10ths of 1% of our budget. So as crime being the priority of our city, and crime reduction being the priority of our city, we've only really spent 3/10ths of 1% of our overall budget on the crime reduction. So I'm gonna echo her comments, we need to spend more, much more on crime prevention. Thank you, Council Chairwoman Jackson.
Very good. Additional comments from councilors? Counselor Hart.
Yeah, that 17 million over four years, that's referencing one small agency within the Office of OPHS. That's not the entire expenditures for trying to reduce violence, that's just the Violence Reduction Team. So we've spent a lot more money. I'm saying that the dollars we are spending, we're not getting value for those dollars. That's the problem. We can spend the money, but let's get something for it.
All right. Additional comments from councilors? All right, seeing none, I will ask if there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak to proposal 182, and I want to remind everyone, there is a two-minute time limit. Please proceed, sir.
Hi, my name is John Boggs. I live in the North District. North District is about 200,000 people in Indianapolis Metropolitan Police Department. It has 200 officers. Cincinnati, same size, has about 1,100 officers. So you kind of look at, when you look at budgets, and you start looking at the amount of police that are out there, it's something else. I'd also like to read you a couple of statistics. In 2020, Indianapolis residents made a total of 928,810 calls to 911. That's an average of 2,544 every day, average of 106 calls every hour, or 1.8 calls every minute. So when you talk about defunding the police, and you're saying, you know, I don't know how many have ever ridden with the police department as a beat officer, but it's a whole different world out there than was portrayed in the seasons you have to make and the professionalism that these young men and young women do. There was also 416,062 non-emergency calls. So your responsibility, this is just in Indianapolis in the year 2020, so almost, you know, if you look at the totals, almost a million, a million, over a million phone calls that your residents hear that you're responsible for deemed it necessary to call 911 and report something, or report something for somebody else. These calls were answered by 911 and transferred to the police department, the fire department, or the right EMS, and the citizens deserve this. They deserve someone to answer their concerns when something is happening that is dangerous to them or to their neighbors or to something they see. I think that is very important. And I zoomed in on the last council meeting, was watching it, and, you know, when I hear people talk about defund the police or do this, I mean, seriously, who you gonna call if you can't call them? You gonna call Ghostbusters? Anyway. It seems like there's a lot of money approved for these other programs, but I would like to see some vetting that says, how is this money being spent and what results? Thank you.
Well, thank you again, and I apologize, I didn't know that we were talking about the amendment last time. I didn't know that we weren't talking about the full proposal, so I won't repeat everything I've already said. And the only reason why I told you who I am and what I'm about is so that, you know, I'm just not some yahoo walking in off the street who doesn't have any experience in crime, in the area of crime and community safety. But my main point here is there are two words that stood out that caused a crawl for us: investments and balance. When you invest something, you expect to get a return. This proposal doesn't say what the return is gonna be. They used a lot of nebulous and vague language about, you know, systems and stuff like that, but it doesn't really say how is it gonna get to preventing crime. And balance, as I said, when looking at the overall numbers, IMPD is getting 46% of this money, and 11% of the money is going to community-based programs. That's not balance. And so I just want to close by reading another quote, and some of you are gonna understand where this came from. "Our neighbors and loved ones are not dying for a lack of committee meetings, they are not dying for a lack of concern or care. They are dying from a lethal combination of untreated trauma and mental health issues, addiction, deprivation, and ready access to guns. If we want to have a true impact on violence in our city, we need, we have to be ready to face the true root causes." And I quote Chairman Leroy Robinson from his comments. And I would just say, we need, we need to see how people use guns as a means to an end, and focus on the motivations for using the gun. Could be everything from need to greed, mental illness, or just plain evil. In other words, we need to find out what's driving people to get and use guns. Please consider either reallocation of portions of this money, or putting some additional funds toward youth programming. Thank you for your time and your attention.
I don't know how germane he was, Mr. President, but, you know, I have never came into this chambers that's supposed to represent our city and felt such embarrassment for my people and the dynamics that exist in this chambers tonight, where my people are being used by white liberals to bring this issue forward. They use them just like they use them during the civil rights era, to make them destroy their own community.
Sir, Mr. Vaughn? Mr. Vaughn?
Point of order, Mr. President.
Black people are being used, our skin, our plight is being used by these white liberals who have assembled here tonight, they don't have any stake in the game, they're trying to collect money off of misfortune. Thank you, Mr. President.
Very good.
You're being used by whites, like slaves of war.
Hello, everybody. Ashley Gervitz again. I'm just gonna come up as a community member and just giving the emphasis of the work as a volunteer, my heart, my love, my passion. Every single day, we talking about 46218, 46226, and 46205, my daily interactions. Now, I share that to say that I really hope wherever you fall, as far as this idea, that hopefully with proposal 182, we see this as an intersection, as far as getting down to the deep-rooted cause, as far as what we, what we see with why we're saying defund police. But on the other side, that we have to not ignore the fact, and I might not have everybody agree with me, but I think about this all the time, we are resource-rich, but systems poor, and we gotta be able to have the data to be able to back up the feels. I'm tired to go into scenes where we got law enforcement there trying to navigate. I need more community members to join us in making sure we're getting them to the resources to help them. And I share that to say, you know, I don't want us to miss with Section 3, actually, let me go back to this. Section 4, 1.11 million that we have for the Office of Public Health and Safety, it specifically says verbatim, "Funding community program initiatives related to domestic violence reduction, mental health, and juvenile intervention rehabilitation." Again, this is not the end-all-be-all, but if we can all come together, and I'll say to Councilman Nae and to other members that may see different, we wouldn't all be packed in this chamber right now if we all had our answer. So if this 182 can be that introduction to us find it, let's do that. On top of it, we, one more second, one more second. I was out there marching. I was out there. I just came from the complaint board. I hear it on all ends, but we really gotta be in a position to understand what we are doing with our taxpayer dollars, to be fair and impartial. And my last thought of this is, as we continue to see new investments to come in, it is also our responsibility as members of this community, when big business wants to come in, what's our social and corporate responsibility to give back? So thank you for that.
Thank you.
So, now to talk about the proposal itself. As an organizer here in the city, I've organized in every township and every excluded city and the county. I've talked to hundreds of, upon hundreds of poor and oppressed working people in this, in this county, and not a single one of them has ever been helped by the police. Not a single one. But, but a large portion of them have been personally targeted by police, personally hurt by police, myself included. I have faced transphobia by IMPD officers who look like the ones just in this room. Transphobia, transphobic slurs at me. And you want to fund that? You want to give more money to that? So if you, if you're really talking about violence, which on the IMPD's own website, they admit that with increased funding, it doesn't actually decrease violent crime, which is kind of a boogeyman anyway, but it does exponentially, literally exponentially, it's an exponential curve of increased police violence against unarmed people in the city. An exponential curve of police violence. Not, not violence in our poor and oppressed communities, but police violence against them. So if you really want to tackle violence, instead of funding the police, which won't do anything, tackle, tackle the real issues. Help the homeless. Provide mental health to people who have been denied mental health. Provide housing to trans and gay kids who have been kicked out of their homes. Provide decent and dignified jobs to the thousands upon thousands of people in this county who do not have them. And not, not minimum wage, decent jobs that can actually pay the bills. You want to talk about violence? Talk about the violence that's been put on us, not, not this fake, made-up violence that is supposedly happening on our part.
Thank you, sir.
I do want to talk about the previous speaker that was up here. I don't know your name, really don't care to. You're speaking from a place of privilege when you say, who are we gonna call? Ghostbusters? I'd rather call them or call on Jesus than to call IMPD, because I'm at risk of being shot. So that's all I'm gonna say about that. And then also, I want to speak about the shootings over July 4th, it's, I don't celebrate that holiday. So, we have a police department, did they prevent these crimes?
No.
Oh, thank you. Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Yeah, it was how many shootings? 16, 18?
Eighteen.
Eighteen? Eighteen people died?
Eighteen people was homicide, and it was more than that, it was actually murder.
Okay, so they're not preventing crime, so I'm not understanding why. They're even saying they don't want the money, but some of you guys are trying to still give the money, so help me understand that, like, yeah.
Refund the police, refund us, yeah.
Hi, my name is Andrea Sernich, and I'm a citizen of Marion County, and I appreciate the effort to add this opportunity to IMPD to help our city get better. And I come as a, from a perspective of just a normal citizen, I appreciate all the perspectives that everybody has shared, and the passion and empathy and sincerity from everybody who's spoken, because every voice is important, every perspective is important. I want to thank IMPD tonight for the times that they've come at a moment's notice when I've called, because the pimp across the street- across the street was bashing a girl's head into a car and into the street to the point of near death and how quickly IMPD came. And every time they came when we called, when somebody was driving down our street, walking down our block, shooting at our homes, I wanna ask that there be accountability for this funding, that they might be able to increase the receptivity or response times for 9/11 calls so that the next time my neighbor shouts at me from her home to call 9/11 because of a domestic violence incident, I don't go into hold, a hold service for her. I also come from a perspective of working in the domestic violence sector in this city, and I know that there is severe trauma and severe danger for everybody involved, for the victims, for the families, the neighbors, and certainly for our first responders. And I hope that this money will help them find, help IMPD find a way that they can better assess, address, and train and respond to those situations because every time I drive down 34th Street near Crown Hill Cemetery and I see that sign that remains that says Baker 321, Rest in Peace, We'll Take It From Here, I think of Officer Breonna Leith and the danger that she faced that day that she lost her life and the day that her son lost her mom. I thank IMPD for all that they do, that we don't have to do that. I know that's not an easy solution, but I thank you for committing this money to them.
Child, to be white, man, must be a privilege. Okay, well, my name is Kyra. I'm with AD10, Black Lives Matter. I'm pretty sure y'all seen me before. I was out in the summer getting my ass whipped by IMPD, and we had made very clear demands. I've been doing this for seven years, probably longer than y'all, some of y'all been in this seat. So I wanna talk about what violence looks like. Violence looks like a lot of different things. Somebody talked about food deserts. That's violence. People not being able to go sleep somewhere in a bed, that is violence right there. So what you're gonna do today is commit an act of violence. You are no better than the people that you call criminals. You keep locking them up, and they keep getting out and doing the same thing because they don't have nowhere to go, they don't have no resources. Try something else. What the hell y'all gonna do when these people can't feed themselves? There's a global pandemic, and crime has went up because people can't feed their families. And you guys don't even give a fuck. It is so crazy. The community has spoken. We have spoken. We pay y'all. That is violent. No, Bob, I'm not done talking. You gonna listen to me?
But you're done? Hold on a second.
Anyways, like I was saying.
You're done cursing.
It's gonna be violence. What y'all gonna do? Arrest me? You gonna arrest me? Like I said, what y'all gonna do?
No, we're not arresting.
This is violence right here, too. This is violence right here, too. You gonna call your pigs on me? That's what you gonna do?
Just no cursing. Just no cursing. No one's trying to arrest you. Just no cursing up in here.
All right. Everybody out who is making noise. Can you please escort the folks out?
Right. My name's Sam James. I'm a--
Point of order.
Right. My name's Sam James, and I'm here to talk about the idea that crime is the worst it's ever been this year because that's some nonsense that I hear from white folks every single year in this city. Every single year in this city, crime's the worst it's ever been. I've lived here almost thirty years. It's always the worst it's ever been. Disregarding the unreliability of that kind of data, how you crunch the numbers, how you interpret those numbers, you could say anything you wanted to say depending on how you look at it. Disregarding that, every year it's the worst it's ever been, why are we continuing to do the same damn thing we've always done? Pouring millions of dollars into the police budget, kicking out black women who say things you don't like? Unacceptable. This is not, this is not a body that represents the people of this city, and you should all be ashamed of your participation in this.
Ma'am, thank you. Hold on, wait a minute. Everyone, just a moment before you come up here. You are free to say what you would like to say. One, you're not badmouthing someone, and two, you're not cursing in this room. And if you can't do that, step out. Let it be clear. And, next comment, let it be germane to the proposal. Step forward.
Hi there. My name is Kerr. I am a Riverside Neighborhood member. I hadn't planned on saying anything tonight, but something that I'd like to ask you guys to all think about yourself is why is it that big emotion from black women makes you uncomfortable? Why is it that the truth makes you uncomfortable? We do not need more policing. I also agree that I think the most effective thing is abolishing the police, but defunding is a good first step. We heard at length, someone, I don't know anyone's names, I apologize, someone on this floor did talk extensively about how we keep spending so much money and sending money all the time to IMPD, but we keep seeing crime escalate. Similar to what Sam just said, why are we continuing to try the same thing over and over and over again? And if it's not working, what we need is community care. And I did wanna make a point onto the technology, that we do not need technology and AI technology in the hands of the police. I don't know if this is common knowledge, but I would like to acknowledge an experience I had with an IMPD officer. They are coming around door-to-door for people that have ring doorbells to ask for access to viewed surveillance at any time for the neighborhood. That's really uncomfortable for me, so I don't understand why there's even a proposal to add more money for technology that they're already getting access through personal devices. We need to invest in community care. We have talked, I've heard a lot of people express concern on mental health, drug abuse, and homelessness. We need trauma-informed care, and we need to defund the police.
Hello, my name is Jonathan Howe. I'm a lifetime resident of West Indianapolis, business owner for a decade, and president of the West Indianapolis Neighborhood Congress. As I sit up here today and I listen to everybody talking, it seems like that we're hearing passion from both sides, and everybody agrees on the same thing, is we're trying to prevent crime, we're trying to heal our community, we're trying to impact this city in a positive way. Regardless of whether you think each person's perspective is correct, we have the same goal. Some people, it's all about funding though, right? Some people think youth, some think parks, community centers, IMPD, mental health. Funding is always a part of this debate. And yet, there's one simple fact. Every time IMPD gets more money, more people die. This is a fact. As IMPD budget has increased, people have died. Now, is that their fault? No. But have they provided a solution? No. All right? So the question is, how can we heal as a community? Every suggestion costs money, and tonight's the perfect example of why we are in this problem because the crown has allowed us to speak on ninety-seven percent, I mean, on three point zero three percent, three percent of what is being spent by the city tonight. Ninety-seven percent, we don't get to speak on. We're not, we don't get a chance to even speak on one hundred and thirty-five million that's going to corporate welfare for Alanco. That money is defunding our communities. As these people talk about the danger of defunding the police, no one's talking about the defunding of our communities tonight via TIFs, via tax abatements. Leah did a great job, or not Leah, the other lady that spoke from, that was a community member, was talking about the responsibility of corporations. We're doing nothing with this TIF money and with these abatements to hold them responsible to help curb crime and heal our communities. We are defunding our parks, our community centers. My neighborhood has no programming in the community center. Both of their pools are closed. Our parks are deteriorating, our infrastructure is deteriorating, and we're giving twenty-five years of our taxes to a corporation who made record profits and whose CEO got over ten million in compensation this year. That is the problem. We are defunding communities.
Hi, my name is Amanda Shepherd. I am a Northeast Side Indianapolis resident. Most people who know me know me as an environmental activist and may wonder what the connection might be between that work and this issue. But the truth is, we know we can't win on any of those issues without defeating white supremacy. And I know that I've benefited from this white supremacist system for my entire life, and it's far past time for true liberation for all, not just people who look like me. We have to shift priorities away from this punitive system as it currently exists and toward investment in the things that actually keep communities safe, like high-quality housing, education, access to the healing impact of nature by funding parks, and access to quality mental health care. Part of my mission in this work that I do every day is to fight for safe and healthy communities, and this includes safety from police violence, which can only be furthered by additional funding. So I ask you to please oppose Proposition 182. Thank you.
I'd like to reiterate what a lot of people have already said, specifically my friends who were kicked out. But to address the first gentleman who spoke, defund the police does not mean get rid of all sort of funding, all sort of response to crime. It means you need to reallocate these funds to the community. It's evident, there are hundreds of years' worth of evidence to show policing and imprisonment aren't solving the issues of crime. I mean, and concerning the statistics about the number of calls that come in, so many of those do not need to be addressed by police. I mean, there are mental health professionals, there's the fire department, there's all these other departments that are better suited and are less violent than the police. And I think the primary issue here is that you're all confusing prevention with punishment because our prison system isn't preventing crime, it's just punishing people and putting them out of sight so the rest of the community doesn't have to worry about them. And every, the people who are being imprisoned are largely black and brown people. I mean, how do any of us have the right to be free when there are people being discriminated against and falsely imprisoned? Also, to touch on another issue that was brought up, domestic abuse. A higher percentage of cops are domestic abusers than the general public. So who's really the issue here? Thanks.
Hello, my name's Chino Simmons. I really don't know any of y'all. I really don't care 'cause clearly y'all don't care about us, but I am a statistic, you know what I'm saying? As far as in growing up here in Indianapolis, Indiana, and to be honest with you, I've watched, you know, the people chant that they wanna defund the police. I support that. As she just said as well, it's not just taking away the police, period, as some people may think. It's just, you know, putting those funds where they need it. I just believe that you guys need to listen to these people that care about the community that they live in. And if you guys claim that you care about the community, then you should listen to them because they're actually living in the community as we speak. All right, y'all have a good one.
Hello, everybody. My name is Evelyn Wells, and I'm with the Liberation Center today, the Indy branch in specific. I just wanted to address everyone today, and I thank you for coming. By all the things that have been said today, I, as a person who does live in these terrible conditions, these food deserts, these areas where trash is thrown down, and I'm a college graduate, by the way, and not many people get that opportunity. And what we wanna see is for individuals to be able to have more access to education, food, water, and clothing. And a lot of individuals are seeing this funding and seeing our communities that are, you know, historically been trashed and violented on by not only just the police, but violence that has existed because there is a lack of resources there for individuals of color. So the ways in which you want us to act better, 'cause I do act better, but if you want other individuals to stop drinking, smoking, doing crime and violence, you have to feed them. You wanna stop black women yelling at you and doing all this vitriolic stuff. You have to feed them, you have to educate them, you have to clothe them and give them water and shelter every single day. Because this, this system that we're inheriting today, it really doesn't solve our fundamental issues, which causes these problems within our community. So if you want us to act calm, I really beg you to consider the fact that these individuals, they come to you in hunger and with trauma and with mental health issues. And funding the police are going to increase those problems instead of actually solve those problems. We know this because individuals like me are targeted constantly, and I shouldn't have to walk in this building and feel like I am trapped by individuals who have historically made me a statistic. Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
I would like to address you all from the perspective of a city, a citizen. I live in Indianapolis, Marion County, and I am also a part of a non-for-profit organization that works to strive for social justice through policy change and raising awareness. So I wanted to speak on this proposal because I believe that a lot of what IMPD does and to increase the public safety that they can offer doesn't require more funding. People have shared stats tonight about how increasing the funding can actually increase violence or doesn't affect it at all. But I think that more importantly, we need to focus on the reallocation of these funds because there's things that do not even take funding. For example, my organization has been looking at the general orders of IMPD, and we've revised nine of them to increase public safety, community, and police relations, as well as to protect constitutional rights and human rights of individuals. We plan to present them next Monday to the General Order Review Board. And we've also been making strides in other directions surrounding the public health and safety issue. So we've started a grocery prescription program to address some of the food insecurities in the food deserts. That is something that requires money, but like I said, not everything requires money, and I look forward to a continued partnership with IMPD. They've been responsive throughout this process, and I appreciate just beginning to learn the way our city works. Thank you.
Sinclair Williams, resident of District 17, property taxpayer on residential and commercial properties. As far as what Proposition 182 plans to allocate towards technology, that's what I would like to speak on. The fact that we're spending or planning to allocate more money towards labor than computer programs is quite scary, in my opinion. In the age of machine learning and AI, artificial intelligence, we're spending more on data analysts. If the programs the analysts are utilizing are subpar, we know how, we know the results we're gonna get. So this is more spending without thinking. It's quite frustrating. I decided to build in downtown Indianapolis a year and a half ago, bought the land from the city, went out, got an architect, invested over six hundred thousand dollars. I expect, maybe crazily, for some help and support from the city. When I see paper tags on the streets driving-- When I see paper tags on the streets driving around for over 12 and 18 months, that's not help from the city. When I see that there isn't enough patrol officers on the beat and we're spending more on data analysts, that's not help. Think about it, guys. Think about it. Thank you.
Very good. Are there additional comments from councilors on Proposal 182?
Hey. So long as we're here. Hi, my name's Marta. Mr. Robinson, I'm one of your residents. I just wanted to pop up here and just really quickly say that the women and femmes of Indy 10 Black Lives Matter have every right to their anger and a thousand reasons to be feeling it, and probably, over the years, a fair amount of reasons to feel a little disillusioned with this process and a little impatient with being here again and again. And yet, they still show up. You see their anger, we see their dedication, passion. They're amazing. So I'd like to say that. And then also that it's interesting to me that a few of the people who spoke up here have challenged the chief's assertion that any of this will be an immediate, provide immediate relief. It's not going to. I just... Someone else talked about how, I'm sorry, I'm a little bit nervous, talked about the thousands of 911 calls, and anyone, like, there are so many of them that are from loose dogs to mental illness, like, mental health crises, to just any number of things that are not violent crimes, that the police have too much on their plate and they aren't doing it well. I... I'm real sorry, I'm nervous, and I know we're at the end of this, but I would just kind of entreat you to think about how defunding the police is a catchy slogan, but it's not just, you know, a simplistic rose-tinted glasses. We aren't here just to stonewall everything you put out into the world and try to pass. I think that whatever solutions have been introduced tonight by the police force, they aren't it. Like, if you could just not, if you could just vote no and vote another day on some other measures, to put that money toward that will actually make our city safer.
Thank you, ma'am.
That would be great.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to, just to give us an idea of how crucial funding towards police is right now. In the hour we've spent talking about this, three people have been shot in this city. Three people have been shot in the last hour that we've spent talking about this. It's time for immediate solutions, not long-term investments, and we need something to figure this out, an immediate solution. Counselor Jared Evans.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think it's always difficult when a lot of our constituents and citizens come down and they feel like they're not being heard, and I just wanted to remark that a lot of us are very in tune with our constituents in our districts and talk to them. We do polls. So sometimes when our votes don't reflect the atmosphere in the room, it's because we've done our due diligence, we've talked to our constituents, we've done polling, and we've heard from our constituents on that issue. So I do want to comment that it's not that we're not listening, there's always opinions of the matter coming from other roles. And, Mr. President, I would also call the question to this.
All right. Counselor Evans has called the question. So, Madam Clerk, may we take this to the board, please? Calling the question on Proposal 21-182. That passes 18 to 7. So, Madam Clerk, if you can reset the... If you can reset the board, we will take a vote now on Proposal 21-182. All right, Proposal 182, 23 yay votes, 20 nay votes. Motion, that proposal passes. The next item on our agenda is Proposal Number 183, referred to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal 183, 2021. Mr. President, I'll hold on just for a few minutes, please. Room clears. Let the room clear just for a moment, please. Thank you.
I hope you will recognize how you're maturing the communities that you're representing.
Mr. President, Proposal 183, 2021 approves an additional appropriation totaling $1,117,500 in the 2021 budget of the Marion County Sheriff's Office federal grant funds for the purposes of additional grant awards for combating the spread of coronavirus, law enforcement, mental health resources, and to support the needs of inmates. Excuse me. Colin Carr, CFO of Marion County Sheriff's Office, stated that they received several grant awards last year following the conclusion of 2021 budget season. She said that the grant will be used to prevent the spread of COVID-19, increasing wellness resources for deputies, and support for inmates. Ms. Carr said that none of these grants require a match. Counsel Oliver Moot, seconded by Counsel Calino, has proposed 183 to the full council. They do pass recommendation. Motion carries by vote of 11 to 0. Mr. President, I so move.
All right, motion is improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? Counselor Ethan Evans.
Thank you, President. I just wanted a brief clarification on the portion of 183 regarding the mental health resources and the needs of inmates.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
If there's someone from the office here that could clarify. Again, I know it was discussed briefly in committee, but just one more time, the needs of inmates section.
Yeah, Mr. President, Ms. Carr is present. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Ms. Carr.
Thank you. It was just the section of the funding going to support the needs of inmates. If you could clarify that portion for me, thank you.
Oh, yes, absolutely. So those go to fund supplies and equipment that are of the direct benefit. So, I mean, that could be anything from clothing to hygiene supplies, linens, shoes, sandals, really just the supplies that they need throughout their course of the day with us.
When this goes through, will you be able to provide with an itemized list of some sort of what actually goes through?
Yes, absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions from councilors? Proposal 183. All right, seeing none, is there anyone in the audience and the public who would like to comment on Proposal 183?
Hello again, Jonathan Howell again. Again, we are here discussing how we respond to the results of crime and spend money to respond to crime instead of spending money to prevent it. And we're talking about 1.117, a million hundred thousand seventeen... Million one hundred seventeen thousand dollars. Meanwhile, we are not discussing $135 million just on the agenda tonight. We're not discussing 97% of what you guys are spending tonight, but we get to argue and debate about how to respond to crime. And it's kind of ironic, because it's also a response to the coronavirus, which you guys have lifted all restrictions for. So the money's late on that response, just like it seems to be with everything that we're doing in regards to crime. We're behind the ball, we're late, we're after the effect, we're responding, we're not preventing, we're not supporting our children, we're not supporting people so they don't become inmates and they don't need coronavirus relief in jail. And it's just extremely alarming. I just, I don't understand as a body how you can sit here and think that it's okay for us to have two minutes to talk about 1.1 million dollars and zero minutes to talk about 135 million dollars. I just don't know how that sits okay with any of you here today. And this proposal is, you know, it seems like it makes sense, it's coming from federal government, whereas these other proposals are city funds from our tax base, from my community, from where I live. I don't get a say on it here in front of you guys. I have to speak on these other hearings and talk about 1.1 million dollars of late coronavirus relief that should have probably happened a year ago. Thank you.
Counsel Vice President Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to point out, and I know many of us who are members of the Metropolitan Economic Development Committee will remember hearing from the previous gentleman at great length on the proposal that he said he never got to speak on. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Please, go ahead, sir.
Sinclair Williams, resident of District 17. This is government, this is how government works, this is how city council government works, that's understood. What I cannot understand is... I don't know how to describe it. It is a... It is a ploy at doing something while maintaining the status quo. As I mentioned, I'm all in. I bought land, built a house, starting a family. I'm all in on Indy. And to see how you guys go about allocating funds, it's extremely frustrating, and it's with a... So this particular proposal, I'm all for. I just wanted to take the time to express to you, as someone who has chosen to invest and develop in Indy, the feeling I get from you all up there. Thank you for the time.
All right, I don't see any additional comments from the public. Councilors, are there additional comments on Proposal 183? All right, very good. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you open the board? Motion carries 25 to 0. Next item on our agenda is Proposal Number 184, referred to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal 184, 2021 approves an additional appropriation totaling $1,86,800 in the 2021 budget of the Marion County, of the Marion Superior Courts, the federal, state, and local grant funds for the purpose of additional grant awards to cover additional expenses associated with the coronavirus pandemic, providing additional services to juvenile offenders, and funding positions associated with pre-trial probation. Monica Ferguson, the Director of Finance for the Marion County Superior Court, said they are requesting $1,86,600 for additional grant appropriation. Funds that were being identified the last budget season have not received these funds to cover COVID preparation, as well as additional services for juvenile offenders, and funding positions associated with pre-trial probation. Counsel Boots moves, seconded by Counsel Oliver, to send Proposal 184 to the full council. They do pass recommendation. The motion carries by vote of 11 to 0. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion is improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? Counsel Hardey.
Yeah, just a question. I'm curious of the percentage of the funds that are local.
All right, is there anyone here from the city who can answer that? Who can answer Counsel Hardey's question?
Hi, Abigail Hansen, Budget Director. Your question, can you say it one more time for me?
Yeah, in the digest, it says that these are federal, state, and local grant funds. What are the breakdowns of those percentages?
Of the 995,000 appropriated, 2/3 is federal grant. Not even 1% is local grant. It's $3,000, and then 400,000 is for state grants.
So do these come from the American Rescue Plan?
It is a variety of funding sources, and I do not have the actual breakdown of the different grant awards that it is approving.
Okay. Thank you. Very good. Thank you. Counselor Ethan Evans.
Thank you. I need someone back. I was going to ask if someone could clarify what the additional services would be offered under, for the juvenile offenders.
Unfortunately, I do not have the answer to that question, because I don't work for the courts, but we can get you an answer to that.
Thank you.
Additional questions from councilors on Proposal 184? All right, seeing none, is there anyone in the audience, in the room, with an interest in speaking on Proposal 184?
Hello again, Jonathan Howell. I wanted to speak on Proposal Number 184 in regards to 183 and 184. It's very interesting, because it seems like this is a very big need, and there's a consensus among the council that this is a good thing and that they want to pass it. I think it's very telling that we have such a large need and we're relying on the federal government for that need. And it seems like that we've put ourselves in that situation because of the way that we've managed our budget and the fact that we've removed 10% of the general budget and set it aside towards TIFs and other financing schemes to take from our general budget and take from our communities, and left us in a situation where we need to rely on federal funds.
Point of order, Mr. President.
In regards to 1 million.
Sir, if you want to speak to Proposal 184 specifically?
I was, I was speaking to the federal funds, $1,860, and the fact that it's saddening that we have to rely on those due to the budget constraints that we have. And I did want to point out, to address the statement made before, the young man is correct. I did get an opportunity to speak before on that other bill. I'm sorry that I even thought that I would be able, or my residents, my neighbors would be able to come speak with you guys today, to the whole council. God forbid that we would have a voice in millions of dollars in spending.
You did have a voice, you came to the committee, and you shared your opinion.
Did we get to speak to the whole council? Did this neighborhood get to speak to the whole council? Were the neighbors notified of over 135 million in spending taking place? Did anything go to their door?
Thank you, sir.
No, it did not.
It's very interesting because it seems like this is a very big need, and there's a consensus among the council that this is a good thing and that they want to pass it. I think it's very telling that we have such a large need and we're relying on the federal government for that need. And it seems like that we've put ourselves in, in that situation because of the way that we've managed our budget and the fact that we've removed 10% of the, the general budget and set it aside towards TIFs and other financing schemes to take from our general budget and take from our communities, and left us in a situation where we need to rely on, on federal funds.
Point of order, Mr. President.
In regards to 1 million.
Sir, if you want to speak to Proposal 184 specifically?
I was, I was speaking to the federal funds, 1,860, and the fact that it's saddening that we have to rely on those due to the budget constraints that we have. And I did want to point out, to address the statement made before, the young man is correct. I did, I did get an opportunity to speak before on that other bill. I'm sorry that I even thought that I would be able, or my residents, my neighbors would be able to come speak with you guys today on, to the whole, the whole council. God forbid that we would have a voice in millions of dollars in spending.
You did have a voice, you came to the committee and you shared your opinion.
Did we get to speak to the whole council? Did this neighborhood get to speak to the whole council? Were the neighbors notified of over 135 million in spending taking place? Did anything go to their door?
Thank you, sir.
No, it did not.
Thank you. Any additional comments from the public on Proposal 184? All right, seeing none. Are there additional comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you open the board? Our Proposal 184, vote of 25 to 0, motion carries. There is no business under special orders, unfinished business, and so we will now proceed to special orders final adoption. And this next item on our agenda is Proposal Number 149, referred to Metropolitan Economic Development Committee Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal Number 149 amends Chapter 341 of the Code, adding a new Article III regarding waterway activities in and on the downtown canal. Rusty Carr, Deputy Director, DMD, made a brief presentation on the proposal. Mr. Carr stated that the sidewalks and the canal will remain public, adding that the ordinance will allow the city to have liability shield and have the authority to set rules. It is envisioned that any fees collected will be allocated to IMPD because they will be the ones enforcing, enforcing the ordinance. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of 10 to 0, and Mr. President, I so move.
All right, the motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors? Counselor Nay.
Just a very brief comment, Mr. President. In committee, I had noted several times that I believed that any of the fines that were levied on citizens ought to go directly to the Indianapolis Metropolitan Police Department, specifically the downtown district, as they are and would be enforcing this particular ordinance. After some discussions with DMD and others, it was determined that an actual amendment was not necessary, that those funds could be given to the Indianapolis Metropolitan Police Department without an official amendment tonight. So I'm not offering an amendment, but look forward to supporting this.
Vice President Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to add my name as a sponsor of this proposal. Thanks to the administration for doing what they could to alleviate some of the concerns that counselors had. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Additional comments on Proposal 149? Counselor Hart.
If I could just get like a short synopsis of the problem we're trying to solve with this. I just get concerned when we add new fees to citizens of the city. I was not in this committee meeting, so if I could just be, and anybody else watching could be informed on the problem we're trying to solve.
All right, is there anyone here from, from DMD? CFO Carr, thank you.
Hello, Rusty Carr, Deputy Director of Department of Metropolitan Development. So the main purpose of this ordinance is to essentially provide some liability protection for the city, for those who might be jumping into the canal or throwing, you know, a scooter into the canal, or, you know, bringing their water vessel, watercraft, kayak, without proper authorization, the city is liable. And so this ordinance allows some liability protection here, and then allows us the opportunity to create an application and some standard rules around where someone can enter the canal and at what times. So that's, that's the synopsis.
Counselor Hart.
Yeah, and how many cases have we incurred from liability issues due to either jumping in scooters or watercraft accidents?
We have a number of scooters thrown into the canal pretty regularly. While I'm not familiar with an exact number of actual cases that we've experienced, at least in my time here, that's not to say we don't want to prevent any of those in the
Counsel Ethan Evans.
Thank you. Then a question regarding what you just mentioned about the process initiating for registering or however it is to get the proper entrance for the watercraft. What, if you could just briefly describe like the new process involved, if, has it gone into effect yet, or when will it, at estimated time? And will this proposal like go in coinciding with the new registration process?
Yes, so we're working through an application now with our attorneys and just going back and forth. Again, what this, this ordinance does is provide that liability protection, which is the key to it. And so we wouldn't want to create an application before we had that protection around everyone. So that is in process with our attorneys now.
Thank you.
Counselor Nay.
While we got Mr. Carr up here, I would just like to ask if there was anything that I missed in my summary as it relates to the, the fines and the potential funding for IMPD?
Absolutely not. That can be handled administratively directly to IMPD. Thank you.
Counselor Ethan Evans.
Sorry, I just forgot one thing. Have you decided, is the registration going to have a fee attached to it?
No, not at this time, it is not.
All right, thank you.
All right, any additional comments on Proposal 149? All right, seeing none, Madam Clerk, may we go to the board? The motion carries 25 to 0. The next item on our agenda is Proposal Number 175, referred to Metropolitan Economic Development Committee Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal Number 175 approves an amendment to the Deculatory Resolution and Redevelopment Plan for the Consolidated Harding Street Redevelopment Area with respect to elevator, with respect to the Elevator Hill Expansion Area. Scarlett Martin, Director and Rusty Carr Deputy Director of DMD, gave a PowerPoint presentation making the following key points. GM Stamping Plant is currently a 103-acre vacant lot with the potential to be a transformative project for the city. The vision of the Elevator Hill District represents a total phase investment of 250 million, featuring new office space, new neighborhood retail amenities, multifamily and single-family units, and a parking, and parking space. The Elevator Hill will serve as a connector between near, the Near East Side and downtown. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of 10 to 0, and Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, Madam Clerk, may we go to the board, please? Motion carries 25 to 0. The next item on our agenda is Proposal Number 176, referred to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I'd like to take Proposals Number 176 and 177 together.
Chairwoman.
Okay.
Unfortunately, we have a, we have a counselor who's going to need to abstain, so we will need to separate them.
Okay, sounds, sounds good. Proposal Number 176 approves an amendment to the Deculatory Resolution and Redevelopment Plan for the Consolidated Harding Street Redevelopment Area with respect to the GM Expansion Area Allocation Area. This proposal is a technical update to the Consolidated Downtown TIF to reestablish the base and the timeline for debt issuance. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of 10 to 0, and Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors? Counselor Ethan Evans.
Just clarify what you mean by the timeline, a part of it. I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. President.
Mr. President, this proposal allows for the debt to be financed over 25 years, the maximum time allowed that the state gives us instead of for the years remaining on the current allocation area, which is 21 years.
So it extends the?
Yes, from 21 to 25.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Additional questions on Proposal 176? All right, seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you open the board? All right, motion carries 24 yeas and one abstention. The next item on our agenda is Proposal Number 177, referred to Metropolitan Economic Development Committee Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal Number 177 authorizes the issuance of economic development tax increment revenue bonds in a maximum aggregated amount not to exceed 135,145,000 for Elanco U.S. Inc. for the Elanco project on the former GM Stamping Plant, Plant Site, which is located within District 16. This anticipates over 100 million investment for future mixed-use development and for the expansion of the White River State Par infrastructure improvements for connectivity to the GM's, GM site, including a new bridge along Henry Street. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of 10 to 0, and Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors? Counselor Hart.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just in light of some of the comments we've been receiving this evening, could we have somebody come forward and explain the source of the funds, how they're backed, and how these will make improvements to the city of Indianapolis?
All right, can someone come forward, please, from, from DMD?
Good evening, counselors. Scarlett Martin, the Director of the Department of Metropolitan Development. I believe the question is about the source of the funding and the source of revenue that's backing it.
And how it will make positive improvements to the city of Indianapolis.
Sure, so these are tax increment revenue bonds, and so tax increment from the downtown Consolidated TIF will be backing the debt. And essentially, the breakdown of spending for these is 64 million is a, is going to Elanco to build out site improvements at the GM Stamping Plant Site, could include infrastructure or other TIF-eligible expenses. And then about 51 million is going towards, directly towards public infrastructure improvements to access the site. And then about $20 million is going to be spent on financing and debt coverage, the cost of borrowing money.
Now, that 64 million that goes directly to Elanco, is that a check that we write to them?
No, essentially how it works, and I will, I would also defer to the Indianapolis Bond Bank, that's also represented tonight, but essentially how it works is when we issue bonds, there is a project fund that they can draw on when they have eligible expenses, and they invoice us for those eligible expenses.
So would it be a true statement that local companies, potentially small businesses that we have to abide by with Office OMWDB, will benefit from these, from these potential job opportunities?
Yes, sir, yes. So Elanco, as part of their project agreement with the city of Indianapolis, has committed to XBE, the XBE requirements of the city, and so they will have to utilize XBE firms as part of the construction process.
Fantastic. Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Counselor Kristen Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I am thrilled to see this day finally arrive. This project has the support of the Valley Neighborhood, whose neighborhood will benefit, West Indianapolis Neighbors, West Indianapolis Development Corporation, and countless neighbors who look forward to once again see retail shops, commercial, service businesses, and afford, affordable housing throughout our neighborhoods. The infrastructure improvements provided for, including bridges, sidewalks, and pedestrian connector projects, utility and drainage improvements, and much more, will deliver a transformation to the historic Valley Neighborhood and will benefit surrounding neighborhoods as well. This project will provide numerous jobs for skilled and other skilled workers in our community to rescue Oliver Avenue from its current decline, with General Motors closing the plant exactly one decade ago. In the creation of this extension of downtown Indianapolis to the west side of the river, our community can once again live up to the promise of its, of its historic past, with a vibrant community supporting the thoughtful economic development as proposed. Elanco has been listening to our community needs and has been engaged with our neighbors. They do not just want to be a business here in our midst, they want to be an active part of our lives, and we look forward to welcoming them. I humbly and sincerely ask my colleagues to vote yes on this proposal. Thank you, Mr. President.
Your Counselor. Any questions on Proposal Number 177? Vice President Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to ask to be a co-sponsor of this as well.
Very good. Counselor Jared Evans.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to rise in support of this and one, thank Counselor Jones and her work in working with the community and the developer on this. 515 South Harding, that was the address that I grew up in. I'm a Valley Rat, my family are Valley Rats, and this development has meant a lot to me. There's been a lot of talk about, from people who didn't grow up in that neighborhood. And I think as some of you heard, the majority of this money is going toward public infrastructure for the neighborhood. It's reconnecting that neighborhood back to downtown. This isn't the Kentucky Avenue issue that they had decades ago. This is finally a good project for this neighborhood and for the west side of Indianapolis. And so I want to thank everybody who's been a part of that, but especially Counselor Kristen Jones and her work ethic on this. And with her permission, I'd like to be a sponsor as well.
Very good. Additional comments?
Mr. President.
Yes, Chairman Gray.
Is Elanco gonna move from Greenfield here?
So, Director, DMD Director, step forward, please.
Sure, yes. Elanco is relocating their headquarters to Indianapolis from Greenfield, yes.
Are there additional questions from counselors on Proposal 177? All right, seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you open the board? All right, motion carries 23 yeas, one nay, and one abstention. Next item on our agenda is Proposal Number 194.
Keep funding neighborhoods! Keep funding neighborhoods!
Referred to Metropolitan Economic Development Committee Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal Number 194 authorizes the issuance of Indiana Multifamily Note Bonds in aggregate principal amount not to exceed 15,100,000 to finance a portion of the cost of acquisition, construction, and equipping of multifamily housing facility consisting of 156 apartment units with low and moderate income individual housing and family housing located at Central Greens Apartment to be located at 3355 Kirk Bridge Way, which is located in District 15. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of 10 to 0, and Mr. President, I so
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors? Proposal 194. Counselor Hart.
Yes, so this is a new one for me, multifamily note bonds. Are those backed in the same way that, and I don't know who, who could be here to answer this question, but are they backed in the same way? A TIF is backed, or where do we get the backing for this bond? Where does that come from?
Director Martin, would you step forward, please?
Yes, sir. So multifamily housing bonds are not similar to tax increment bonds, in that we do not have a city revenue source that are backing those. So this is just a bond inducement, essentially allowing the project to happen and for it to be financed with 4% low-income housing tax credits.
So I guess I still don't understand how it's backed, then, the bond itself. What's the fund, that's the source?
Sure, so it's a little complex, but the state, through a federal program, issues housing tax credit bond, or tax credits, and essentially, those are utilized to finance these projects.
Are we limited annually on the amount of these housing tax credits that we receive annually?
No, no, so we can, we can induce multifamily bonds whenever the state does issue these credits. And so the state issues the credits. We're just locally here inducing the bonds.
Okay, so is it, to my understanding, then, the state issued the city X amount of dollars for the year 2020 for these housing tax credits, and so we're using them for this purpose?
No, so the- No, so the state issues the tax credits to individual developers for these projects. And so they don't come to the city. Again, we just induce the bonds.
Okay, so the developer would apply for these tax credits, and then we have to be the bond?
Yes, so we can do it, or the state can do it.
Okay. I think I understand now.
Sorry, it's a little complex.
Yeah, like, this is a new one. I mean, I've seen the abatements, I've seen the TIFs, but this is the first time I've seen a multi-family, so I just wanted to try and be a little bit more educated on it before making a vote, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Very good. Chairman Gray.
So if this project failed, who responsible for repaying the bond?
The city would not be responsible, so that's on the developer.
Additional questions on proposal 194 from councilors? All right, seeing none. Madam Clerk, would you open the board? Motion carries 24 to 1. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 185. I'm sorry? It should have been a ye vote on 194. Counselor Kim.
Thank you, Mr. President. If the full council gives consent, Counselor Jackson can change her vote.
Very good. So, do we need to put it back on the board?
No, you can make the change after the fact.
So officially, I think Counselor Jackson, you wanted that to be a ye vote? All right, very good. All right, since it's on the record, thank you very much. All right, the next item on our agenda is proposal number 185. Referred to Public Works Committee, Chairman Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 185, 2021, amends the code to add a new chapter, 710, energy benchmarking and transparency, to Title III, Public Health and Welfare, as an energy and water benchmarking, reporting, and transparency requirement to foster energy conservation, reducing operating costs, economic investment in efficient building stock, with corresponding increased valuation of assets and affordability, and a cleaner and healthier environment. The proposal passed out of committee with a vote of 7 to 3, and I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded, other comments from councilors? Counselor Hart.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've actually been very, I've done a lot of research on this particular topic. I've talked to many individuals, and I just have the position that we're moving a little bit too quickly on this, and I think there's a better way to obtain the end result that we're after. Ultimately, we're after the utility metrics, you know, from these large building sizes, and we're doing it in a way that requires these building owners to submit the data manually. Now, if, and we've even had individuals from the Office of Sustainability tell us that there are more technological ways to obtain this data using what are called application programming interfaces, also referred to as APIs, which, if we use those, we could alleviate having to impact business owners or building owners to submit this. What that would require would be cooperation from AES to support that information via API over to Portfolio Manager. Now, the issue that we have is the language here requires, you know, the business owners to do it, and it puts a penalty on them if they don't do it. Now, my background is in IT, and I think most of you, you know that here, and I can tell you firsthand that when you start implementing humans to do an automated process, you get a lot of bad data. We refer to that as garbage in, garbage out. And that is one thing we definitely want to avoid with this, when we're looking for data that's going to try and reduce a carbon footprint within Indianapolis. So I completely support the notion of reducing carbon and finding cost savings, specifically at our municipal level, where we can reallocate those dollars to community efforts that we've discussed here tonight, such as mental health awareness or addressing food deserts. But there's a better way of doing it, and I don't think this proposal gets to it. You know, additionally, you know, some of the things that can be incurred if we force these up, you know, just, you know, taking some words from some of the large community stakeholders, such as the Indy Chamber, as well as MIBOR and BOMA. You know, they came to the committee meeting and they spoke against this proposal in the same, in a similar fashion that I am. You know, they're not against getting the data. They're not against trying to understand where we can save and reduce our utilities, but they want to do it in an equitable implementation fashion. And they believe that, you know, requiring these individuals, it's going to impact a lot of apartments. It's going to impact individuals that are potentially low-income and put extra burden on them to get some of this information. And we can alleviate that by focusing on a technological version with these APIs. So there's also an amendment that I was made aware of this evening that it has some good pieces to it, right? It, you know, ultimately, I'd like to see penalties removed. You know, when I talk to Morgan from the Office of Sustainability, she tells us that, once things are implemented like this, then the utilities come around. I have a hard time believing that. I really don't want to see businesses penalized for failing to submit data. Like, because I think we can alleviate the businesses from even being a part of it. So with that being said, before an amendment is made today, I would like to move to send this proposal back to committee to continue having discussions. You know, we didn't have the utilities companies, AES or CEG, present at the committee hearings. With the data coming from them, they're an integral part of this process, and they should at least be part of the conversation when we're asking them questions. I'm not doing this out of a bipartisan, or trying to be partisan or trying to get any gotchas. I'm just doing this to try and get the best effect and get the best usage out of doing it, and I'm trying to alleviate an extra burden on business owners. So with that, like I said, Mr. President, I move to send proposal 185, 2021, back to the Public Works Committee.
All right. Motion's been made and seconded to send proposal 185 back to committee. We will need just a simple majority, if that is the desire of the council. So, Madam Clerk, we will, in fact, let me ask, is there debate? Is there any desire for discussion on this before we take it to a vote? Counselor Barth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick comment. I would, as one of the sponsors of the proposal, I would ask that councilors vote against this amendment. Counselor McCormick has been working very carefully with some of the stakeholders and has a very thoughtful amendment that she worked with stakeholders very carefully on and has a lot of depth and thoughtfulness behind it. So I think that'll be offered right after this, so I think that'll be a useful and helpful debate. So I'd ask that councilors vote no on this particular one.
Very good. Is there any additional comment? Counselor Hart.
Yeah, and I think, you know, having an amendment is more reason to send it back to committee. I doubt that everybody on that committee has read that proposal or know the full ins and outs of it. So sending this back to committee would give us an opportunity to review that proposal in whole and its entirety, along with the utility companies being present.
Vice President, did you have a comment?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to echo what Counselor Barth had mentioned about leaving here and taking a vote today. Thank you.
Very good. Chairman Gray.
As everyone discussed, what effect it's going to have on small businesses?
All right, does anyone, is there a counsel who wishes to speak to this? Or do I need to get?
This could be a burden on small businesses, because this could be expensive. It could eventually lead to running them out of business.
All right. Anyone wish to speak to this? Counselor McCormick.
Hi, Mr. President. We have some folks from the Office of Sustainability, Morgan Mickelson is here, that she could address those questions.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, councilors. Morgan Mickelson, Director of the Office of Sustainability. Could you repeat that question? So the ordinance as written will only impact building owners. Building owners may need to obtain their utility data or their tenant's utility data directly from the tenant, who might be a small business owner. However, there are numerous exemptions in a longer timeline to allow, to alleviate these burdens. If I?
All right, Counselor? Counselor Kim.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to remind the councilors that debate is limited to the motion to recommit. Debate can't touch upon the merits of the proposal.
Very good.
On 185.
All right, thank you. Are there comments, basically, on the merits of the motion to recommit? Counselor Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just real quick, I think even with the confusion that we witnessed here in the past few minutes, that that's even more reason than this back to committee and bring it back. Once it's ready for prime time, after we've all had additional time to digest this amendment and bring even more stakeholders to the table. Thank you.
Very good. Any additional comments on the request to recommit? All right, seeing none. Madam Clerk, let's take it to the board. This is on the motion to recommit to committee.
Mr. President, could you speak a little closer to your mic? I didn't understand you.
This motion, or this vote right now, is strictly whether or not to send it back to committee. All right, that motion fails 19 to 6. So we will continue the discussion then on proposal 185. Counselor McCormick.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to amend Sections 710-106, 710-107, and 710-109 in Section 1 of Proposal Number 185, 2021, by deleting the language that is stricken through and adding the underlying language in the highlighted portions. So in Section 10, 710-106, in the chart and other areas, notice that anywhere it says municipal buildings, it is now changed to covered city properties. That language has been changed throughout the entire section. Then we've added Section E. The administrator shall provide no less than four outreach and educational opportunities per calendar year throughout the implementation schedule set forth in subsection A for owners of covered properties. Such opportunities may include, by way of example, in-person and virtual data submission training and assistance, train-the-trainer sessions led by EPA Energy Star, mailers and annual reports, online resources, community office hours, and trade association meetings. The administrator shall maintain some level of educational and outreach opportunities for owners of covered properties following full benchmarking implementation. In Section 710-107, the administrator shall, beginning with covered city properties, again, just adding the covered city properties. And then at the end, Section 710-109, this Section 710-109 shall not take effect until January 1 of 2026, which is the end of the program.
All right. There's been a motion and a second to amend proposal 185. Is there discussion? Counselor Barth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few comments. Number one, I'd like to thank Counselor McCormick, who has done an exemplary job in working on this amendment. She has worked with stakeholders over the course of a pretty significant period of time, thinking things through carefully. As you can hear from the amendment that she put forward, not only does this push back the implementation date to allow a little more time, but it also enumerates in detail what the education opportunities are going to be that were already planned by the city, but now are clearly laid out in the ordinance. So I think this creates a clearer pathway for implementation and gives clarity to the entities that will be affected. So I think it's a really strong amendment. I think it was done in partnership with concerned entities, and I'm happy to support it today. And I urge everyone else to support it as well.
Very good. Additional comments from councilors? Counselor Boots.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a question for clarification purposes. The change from municipal buildings to covered city properties, could someone just please clarify the true distinction there?
A municipal, a municipal property is a covered city property. There is, that's just what we use in the definitions, so we wanted to be consistent throughout. And previously, that timeline chart used municipal property instead.
Thank you.
Additional comments? Counselor Hart, did you have a comment?
Not on the amendment, just on the full thing.
Okay, very good. If there are no additional comments, we will vote on the amendment, proposal 185. Madam Clerk, thank you. Very good. The motion to amend carries 21 to 4. So is there discussion then on proposal 185 as amended? Counselor Hart.
Thank you, Mr. President. One of the things I heard, or questions I heard asked was, will this impact small businesses? It most definitely will, and I can tell you, as being a small business owner, how it will. You know, if I don't submit this data to my landlord, he can start raising rates on me. I mean, and that can happen to any one of these buildings, or any one of these small business owners that are in a tenant. I mean, there's a lot of discrepancies with this that I don't think that many of you are aware of. Another main one is the fact that, you know, when you follow the American Cities Climate Challenge, that's what this is modeled off of. You know, I asked multiple times in committee and phone calls, you know, what's our end goal? You know, that end goal, I'm told, is, you know, to provide information, to get the data and do analysis. I don't believe that to be true. I believe that the actual end goal is what the city of St. Louis has enacted in May of 2021, which is setting performance standards on these buildings. So if you exceed these limits, then you will be fined. And I believe that will dissuade business owners from wanting to be inside of Marion County. I think that, you know, this is not going to be a measure that even models other cities before it gets to St. Louis. For example, this proposal looks to collect data from AES and CEG. In other cities that have done this, they only collect it from the electric companies. There's, when we're looking at what we're trying to model, again, I think we're just doing it in a roundabout way that there's a better way of doing it, and we're going to impact a lot of business owners that we don't have to. And I think it's, we could have done better on this one. We definitely could have.
Additional comments? Counselor Barth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just, I did want to note that we did get a letter of support for this proposal from Cummins, one of our important corporate citizens, not only in Indianapolis but in Indiana. I'd like to read just a few lines that I think are most salient from their letter. So this is from Cummins, reading in their voice now. "On behalf of Cummins, Inc., I write to support the city's proposal 185, 2021, to increase building energy and water efficiency in Indianapolis. We support the city's efforts to identify energy and water efficiency opportunities in large buildings through proven strategies like benchmarking and transparency. We support the proposed ordinance to require large buildings to annually benchmark and report energy information using the free Energy Star portfolio management tool. Further, the proposal before you includes phased approach for reporting, calling for city-owned and larger buildings to lead the way and report their data first. This ordinance will empower building owners to monitor their energy consumption and has the potential to help building owners save utility costs. Cummins is committed to reducing energy use in our buildings, and in 2019, we launched the next environmental sustainability strategy for the company, Planet 2050. This ordinance will provide the market, current and prospective building owners, operators, and tenants with information about their building's energy and water performance. It will encourage building owners and tenants to work together to lower costs. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter. We are happy to provide additional information about Planet 2050 and other measures Cummins is taking to reduce our environmental... Thank you, Mark Denahan, Director, Environment, Energy and Environment. I just wanted to make sure councilors knew that our important corporate citizen Cummins had weighed in in support of this, and as we all know, they've recently opened a large and efficient building right across the street from us. Thank you."
Counselor Jared Evans, did you have a question or comment?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Thank you. Could someone?
Thank you. Could someone, Counselor McCormick, Counselor Barth, could someone speak to the penalties related to this?
Yeah, sure. I can, and I'm going to actually ask Morgan to jump in. But what I would say is the penalties are modest and very generous in its application, which I think is a cautious approach for implementing this and a reasonable approach.
Yeah. Robert Frye, DBW's legal counsel, actually consulted with Deb Law, our city prosecutor, to create a penalty that, penalty structure, rather, that was in line with the already established penalties in our city code. And so, I would say that they're pretty modest, as Counselor Barth was noting, and that I can, if you'd like me to go into explicit detail, I can do that.
Well, you don't have to go into, I just need to understand, so at what point do penalties kick in? How much are they?
Sure. So, they will not kick in until after 2026. And then, so after you're required to comply, we will send notices out, et cetera. And 30 days after the deadline, you will be issued your first fine of $100. And then, the additional 30 days passes, you could receive a $250 fine.
So, and just to be clear, that is because they're just not reporting their data?
They're not submitting their data to the city, correct?
Okay.
A building owner.
Thank you. That's all I wanted to know and say on that. Mr. President, I wanted to use that as a point, that this is pretty damn common sense. You just report your data. There's a small fee if you don't do it. I don't know if we might have been paying attention to the news lately, but there are citizens dying all over this country because of a heat wave, places that are at historic lows at their water levels. There is a problem, not only in this country, but in this world. This is a common sense first step in trying to reduce. And when you look at recycling, what's it say? Reduce, reuse, then recycle. It starts with reduce, because it's the best thing that we can do to help things. This is common sense. I fully support it. And I think the arguments I've heard so far are just ridiculous.
Counselor Hart.
Thank you, Mr. President. And though the fines might be not, might not be large in their value, I just want to reiterate the point that we can alleviate business owners by using APIs that will be more reliable. We can avoid even having to focus on penalties. We can avoid the human interaction. But beyond that, the point I wanted to make is, you know, I also have a letter that was written in opposition from three major stakeholders that were part of the same steering committee. Those would be the Indy Chamber, MIBOR, and BOMA. And I'll just read a part of it, because it is a lengthy letter. But throughout the middle, it says specifically, "We believe the current proposal does not address the core barriers that prevents owners' investments in efficiency, gives insufficient support to owner education, and inappropriately publicized proprietary data, underestimates the cost associated with reporting, and fails to outline a plan of administration and enforcement that will allow for equitable implementation of an ordinance projected to cover approximately 2,300 buildings in Marion County. The Indy Chamber, MIBOR, and BOMA will be unable to support Proposal 185 until these concerns are addressed. Particularly for small and mid-sized firms, efficiency upgrades to buildings can be financially unfeasible or outside the scope of technical capacity, even when owners are aligned with sustainability and efficiency goals. We believe that financial and technical resource gaps are the primary challenge that building owners face when making energy and water efficiency investments. Ratcheting up public pressure on those owners won't change this equation and would ultimately do damage to the business climate and sustainability outcomes. The owners need assistance and education, not a risk of penalty or public shaming. Private, public, and philanthropic partnerships represent the key to address environmental sustainability and climate resiliency in Indianapolis. These collaborations are critical to forming real-world solutions that equally support sustainability and economic growth." Thank you, Mr. President.
Good. Vice President Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wonder if Morgan could come back up. I did have one question that might kind of address some of Counselor Hart's concerns, or at least one of them. With several of the programming that goes on with the city, and I know the grants section with Jenny Foltz, whenever an organization applies for grants through CDBG or something like that, if they are having problems with the application or not scoring as well as they would like to, they need only to contact the city department, and the city will actually help walk them through that process. So, is that also something that the Office of Sustainability will do, or some other department will help businesses to fill out their data?
The Office of Sustainability will absolutely do that.
Right. So, the educational component does exist. Thank you.
Counselor McCormick.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to point out, and I don't know if anyone from those organizations are here, but that letter that was sent, from those entities, was sent prior to them fully receiving the amendment that I proposed, and we just accepted. So, we did address many of their concerns in that, some of their concerns in that amendment, and actually had many discussions over the last 72 hours, working to come to an agreement with their concerns and their issues that they were having. So, we've been in discussion with them. So, I'm not saying whether or not that letter still stays, but we have been in discussion. And then, I also want to just remind everybody that we're, like, drawing our map to determine our baseline for this. We can't set a goal for improvement if we don't know where we start. So, this is an opportunity for us to do that. There's no shame in a score, just opportunity to improve and empower a business owner and a building to become better. So, there's no competition with anyone else. It's only with themselves. So, I think that we need to keep this in mind. This is just our baseline. We can do more to improve. I know that AES is ready to be on board with us, and Morgan can speak more to that if she would like to. But I know that they are on board to get us to that gold standard. And as I said in committee, we as councilors can encourage CEG to come to the table and get there as well. So, as elected officials in this, for this community, we can ask them and demand that they join AES and us in wanting this benchmarking and transparency, and have them come to the gold standard.
Counselor Bain, and then Counselor Hart.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just had a quick question for Director Mickelson. Are apartments excluded in this?
So, multifamily is currently excluded if there are, if your building is at least 50% multifamily. They can file for an exemption, rather. Apologize for the misuse of the term.
Okay. Yeah, I was just having some concerns there, seeing as how would tenants be responsible for submitting their energy usage to the property owner? Because we know we don't have regulatory authority over the utilities, which is why this is specifically focused on property owners. So, and I know Washington, DC, and Chicago have both had some issues with that as well. And I didn't know if you could speak on that.
I actually come from a multifamily background. I was actually doing the energy and water benchmarking for an affordable housing nonprofit. And so, I can speak very fluently to the difficulties that building owners might face in obtaining their tenant utility data. And that is why we have offered that exemption right out of the gate. So, if you're at least 50% residential, you can apply for that, because we understand. However, we're also working with the building owners to find solutions. One is that you put it in your lease-up agreement. And so, that's part of that longer timeline, that they'll have the opportunity to build that into their operations.
Okay, thank you. And then, just a brief comment, if I can, Mr. President.
Please.
Thank you. I do have some additional concerns with this proposal. Just, you know, I see there's a lot of passion. There's certainly been a lot of work that's gone into this. Part of me wishes we could have put in that same amount of passion and energy into our public safety crisis and our infrastructure crisis. But, you know, most of that remains to be seen. But there, I do see down the road how this will become a fine structure. It will become a shaming structure for businesses and property owners downtown, all across Indianapolis and Marion County. And that will negatively affect them as they go and find tenants. You know, tenants won't want to go to high-energy usage buildings, even though that may not have anything to do with the building and strictly just the tenant. So, I think there's so many things that we're not thinking of here with this proposal. That's why I wish we could have put it back in committee, could have flushed this out more with all the stakeholders that are not supporting this proposal tonight. So, unfortunately, I'm going to have to be a no vote tonight. That doesn't mean I don't support a clean energy environment. I do think there's a lot of room in Indianapolis for us to lead the way when it comes to renewable energy. I want an all-of-the-above energy strategy for our city. Unfortunately, this is not the avenue to do that.
Counselor Hart, you had a...
Yeah. I had a question for Morgan, and regarding the size of the Office of Sustainability, and how many employees work there.
Of course. Currently, there are three full-time employees. We share PIO, and we have frequent fellows and interns that also work within our office. We are adding, I'm sorry, we're backfilling a position to round out our team. So, I'll stop there. Fully answered question.
So, right now, you have two FTEs?
Sorry?
Right now, you have two FTEs?
With a third coming onboard shortly.
Okay. So, you know, when I hear about, you know, the amendment and adding training and help, and then trying to manage the inputs of these 2,300 buildings, where do you find time for that with your employees?
With our third FTE that I mentioned, we're actually reimagining that role to manage this program, as well as our municipal benchmarking. We've also received word that there is an American Cities Climate Challenge extension, and so that they will lend additional support to our implementation efforts.
So, we're going to spend approximately, with benefits and everything, $80,000 to $100,000 for a person to monitor businesses inputting data?
That FTE was already in the budget. They're an established part of our office.
But we're still requiring an individual to spend all their time monitoring data being input into Portfolio Manager and training businesses on how to input data into Portfolio Manager.
If I may, the FTE will be focused on driving energy efficiency within our municipal footprint and driving savings.
Yeah, those statements don't line up, but I'm finished, Mr. President.
Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just, I think that the opportunity with this, the question was brought up about providing property owners with resources to be able to make improvements without bringing about shaming. And I also will echo that I don't think this is about shaming. It's hard for the city and municipality to be able to provide information, opportunities for resources, without actually having the information in hand, without knowing exactly how our municipality is utilizing energy. We can't model our opportunities to provide resources to them without knowing exactly what their challenges are. I think that this is a great first step. I think that the extension of the transparency period is great, should allow for plenty of opportunity for property owners to get their house in order, for utilities to be able to support their customers by providing the services. That doesn't say that utilities can't forward the information on behalf of the property owners. These are things that the AES and CEG could do for their customers. So, I think that this is an opportunity for everyone to step up and move the city forward. Thank you.
All right. Vice President Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to also touch on something that Counselor Jared Evans had mentioned. We don't have to look that far to see the effects of climate change. While, right here in Indianapolis, we can look at the weather. For our city has been very temperate, very moderate, very wet June that we've all seen. We've got flooding going all over the, all over the city, while they have droughts on one end of the country. We've got flooding going on here. The ground is so wet that can't absorb any more water. But I also wanted to say that this is something that is monumentally important to people even outside of the city of Indianapolis. But more specifically, people in this city have said that this is important to them. And so, for us to find two full-time employees to manage a 400-square-mile citywide program, I don't think that's asking too much of us here today. So, I look forward to supporting this, and I thank all the members for supporting this as well.
Counselor Barth.
Thank you, Mr. President, for the opportunity to speak again. I'll just quickly make a comment, and Counselor Bain helped me think of this earlier. What you described, Counselor Bain, earlier was a market-based solution, which is exactly what we want here. More information, more information available for consumers, consumers making a decision based on that information, and the market responding. If consumers say, "We want more efficient buildings," we want buildings that are responsive and making changes to acknowledge what's happening in the environment. And then, the building owners respond and provide that product to the consumers, then that's a market-based solution, and that's exactly what we want. So, what we have here is actually the opposite, I think, of what you described, government helping the market correct and become a market-based approach, which I totally support and I think is great.
Counselor Bain.
Thank you, Mr. President. If this, this might be the first government-created market-based solution ever, then. Because government does not create market-based solutions, government hurts them.
Counselor Boots.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just briefly, in, when this was before our committee, I spoke in favor of it, and I repeat my support this evening. Just a quick point of, we are delving into new territory and new uncharted waters. That is always scary. That is always, are we doing the right thing? Do we have the information and evidence based to make a competent decision? But I also never want those type of concerns or anxieties, if you will, to prevent us from doing the right thing. This is not permanent. We hope it is. We hope it works. If it needs fine-tuned, if we need AI to step in to cure some manual issues that are developed in improper data input, which is a big issue. If you're not gathering good data, then it is worthless data, and it's more harmful than good. So, with all that said, I would not want to trip and stumble, because we're concerned with perfection. I think this is a step in the right direction. I think it is what the community is really clamoring for, and I think it's the right thing to do. And I do encourage my fellow councilors to support it this evening. Thank you.
All right. If there are no additional comments then on Proposal 185, I would ask Madam Clerk to open the board. The motion carries 19 to 6. The next item on our agenda is Proposal Number 186. Refer to Public Works Committee Chairman Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I'd like to take Proposals 186 and 188 through 188. So, with consent?
With consent.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't hear whatever that was. Proposal Number 186 authorizes speed limit reduction to 25 miles per hour in the Tanglewood Estates and Mayflower Meadows subdivision in District 3. Proposal Number 187 authorizes parking restrictions on the south side of Prospect Street near Moore Street in District 16. And Proposal Number 188 authorizes speed limit reduction to 25 miles per hour in the Whittaker Valley subdivision in District 24. All of these proposals pass with a due-pass recommendation of 11 to 0, an ISO move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from councilors? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please open the board?
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal Number 189 authorizes the installation of parking meters on the south side of 10th Street between College Avenue and Belle Fontaine Street and on the east side of Pennsylvania Street from 11th to 10th Street in District 17. This proposal passed out of committee with a due-pass recommendation of 8 to 3, an ISO move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from councilors? Counselor Nay.
I'm just not familiar, Mr. Chairman. What were the reasons for the three nay votes? I'm just not familiar, Mr. Chairman. What were the reasons for the three nay votes? If you can't, I'm not, I'm not worried about it. That's okay. I'm, I'm good.
All right. Well, very good. Are there comments on proposal number 189 from, from Counselor? Yes, Counselor, Counselor Carlino?
Thank you, Mr. President. If I may address Counselor Nay's question? If I recall from committee, Counselor Nay, the three nay votes were against regulating current parking that's currently free. Business owners in the area would like for it to have more regulated parking so that they can turn over clientele and increase their business. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
And I can speak to the businesses down at the end of Mass Ave and the Bellefontaine area. I know that a lot of traffic has been driven down to the Bottle Works end of Mass Ave. And there's a little segment of Mass Ave there and along 10th Street that don't have parking meters. And so a lot of times, employees are parking there all day long and not leaving the ability, ability to turn over those parking spaces. So they just want those to match the other parking meters that are in the surrounding area.
Counselor McCormick?
And, and also, if I recall, they were being relocated from another location they've been removed from. And if we didn't put those in, we would pay a fee for not having the amount that we're contracted to have for parking meters. Does that ring a bell? No? Was it a different parking meter conversation?
I think that was a different conversation.
Okay. Then I apologize.
Counselor Ethan Evans?
Thank you. What would be the difference in just posting up a sign on that lane about timing for parking instead of parking meters, and still keeping it as free parking, but timed free parking?
I'm sorry, who was it? Who was your question directed to?
Well, it was about the proposal about the parking meters. And I just asked if this separate solution would be possible about putting a sign in instead about like two-hour parking, three-hour parking, instead of parking meters charging?
Well, I, I know that there is no real enforcement branch that deals with, you know, maintaining a timed parking period. We do have a parking meter enforcement, and they only enforce parking meters. They don't do loading zones or other timed type, type places. So, I mean, we would have to allocate IMPD or something to, to monitor that, which is, I think, a poor use of resources in that area.
Do we currently have signs at other places that locate like two-hour or three-hour parking on streets?
I believe most of those are parking meters. Our parking meters have time limits on them.
Let's ask, is there anyone here from, from Public Works who can address Counselor Ethan Evans's question? Counselor Evans, I'm sorry, I don't see anyone from Public Works who can, who can best answer your question.
I was just going off anecdotal evidence then of seeing signs in certain, certain, not every, obviously, most are parking meters, but I had seen some signs. So I'm just wondering if that was a possible solution. But, thank you.
Speaking from experience, I can say that the loading zones that are near where I work, they are often abused and sit occupied by long-term parkers. And those are only 20-minute zones, so.
Counselor Hart?
I can speak from experience. My business has free parking in front of it, and we don't have that problem of cars not moving. We, we cycle cars regularly. They come in, get their service, leave, and cars come in, go out. And there's no meters there. We do just fine.
Are there additional comments or questions on proposal 189? All right. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you open the board, please? Motion carries 19 to 6. The next item on our agenda, well, there is no business under special service district councils. There is no business under new business. And so the next item on our agenda is announcements and adjournment. The docketed agenda for this meeting of council having been completed, the chair will now entertain motions for adjournment.
Mr. President?
Chair recognizes Counselor Maury.
Mr. President, I have been asked to offer the following motion for adjournment by all councilors in memory of Janet Leckie, Terry Curry, and Dion McKissick, by Counselor Lewis in memory of Stephen L. Wilson, by Counselor Jared Evans in memory of Josh Spencer, by Counselor Osley in memory of Robert Lopez, by Counselor Maschary in memory of Luis Diaz, Betty Siriello, Rory Schwartz, and Max Brendan, by Counselor Jones in memory of Francis Waddell, by Counselor Nay in memory of Thomas Nicholas Anthony Iria, Rita Margaret Eads, and Anna Striekowski, by Counselor Maschary in memory of Rose Maschary and Timothy Hughes. Mr. President, I would like to move the adjournment of this meeting of the Indianapolis City County Council in recognition and respect for the life and contributions of those persons I have specifically named. I respectfully ask the support of fellow councilors. I further request the motion be made part of the permanent record of this body and that a letter bearing the council's seal and the signature of the president be sent to the family of each person advising of this action.
Thank you, Counselor Maury. Hearing no objections, the motion is received, and the request is so ordered. Hearing no further motions, we adjourn. Thank you, councilors.